Nominated by Sarah and seconded by Tom, thank you. Invited to the chair... Oh, sorry, please say aye. Thank you for that short straw.
Okay, yeah, so welcome everybody, welcome to the meeting. Yanni is here with us actually on Skype from Russia, so welcome Yanni as well. I think that's a first for the council to have somebody attending from Russia.
There we are.
Dear, dear. It's quite scary, Yanni.
It's a bit hot at night.
Okay, before we actually... Before we start the meeting guys, I want to open with a sad note. On Friday of last week Derek Anderson passed away. He was 86 and Derek was for 24 years on the Ricketton Borough Council, when there was a Ricketton Borough Council, a square mile. And then he served for six years on the Christchurch City Council. When he was on the council, he was very involved when the council decided it was going to build a new convention centre, Horn Castle Arena, new library, art gallery and the new stand at Jade, all for a hundred million. So Derek was... Derek was very involved in that and worked very hard on that. He was also on the Arts Centre Trust, he was Chair of the Christchurch Heritage Trust, a major heritage advocate, President of Boston Brass Band, 14 years and past President of Ricketton Rotary. He was also a former President of the Christchurch Boys' High, Old Boys' Association and chaired the 125th Jubilee Organising Committee. He was recognised in the 2011 New Year's Honours List when he was made an Officer of the New Zealand Order of Merit for Services to the Community. And the Ricketson-Woggin Community Board, as it was then named in 2015, named a street in the New Longhurst subdivision after Derek Anderson. So there's the Derek Anderson Place for his contributions to the local area. I've actually known Derek for about a long time. And he always had a really smile and was willing to talk about anything. He was interested in a lot of things. So we will miss Derek and I'd just like us to stand for 60 seconds for a minute now. Thank you all very much indeed. So we have apologies from the Mayor for lateness, she's expecting to be here about 11. And Deputy Mayor Turner and councillor East. Were you just moving those or moved Pauline, seconded Sarah? I'll put those, those in favour, please say aye, those opposed, carried. I don't have any declarations of interest. Is there anybody here for the Public Participation Forum? Anybody here to speak for five minutes? Is that why you're here Tina? No. Okay, right, there are no deputations by appointment and there's no petitions. And I'll move that the supplementary reports be added to the meeting, the mayor's report and the draft submission on the Christchurch Casino licence renewal applications, Sarah seconds. Put those, those in favour, please say aye, those opposed, carried. And so we're going to start with the community boards and we're doing them in slightly different order than what's in your agenda. So we're going to s... Ah, the Bike Awards. How could I forget something so important, sorry Sarah. Thanks Chris. So at the... Sarah, you tell us.
So I've been up in Palmestown North the last couple of days at a conference and I have come back bringing bling, which is fantastic. So every year the Bike to the Future Awards are awarded, sort of partnership between NZTA and CAN. And this year there were 60 nominations and we were up for the Best Built Infrastructure Award, which we handily won for the unicycle route, which is absolutely fantastic. And then, so we're up against the other category winners, including actually Bike Tober, the big Christchurch event held last October, that's going to be held again this year, that won the revolutionary award, which is fantastic and we had a bit to do with that too, which is great. And then, and then we also won the supreme award for the unicycle route as well, so best bike project in the country for the unicycle route, which is just amazing, really fantastic. And it's very clear from talking to the transport professionals and advocates and other elected members in Palmestown North that people really look to Christchurch for leadership in this space, which is, which is really good. And while we are, while other places might be doing one or two really cool individual things, the fact that we're doing this, this network and getting it done to such a high standard is the envy of the rest of the country, which is, which is really good. So I'd like to just call out quickly Lynette Ellis and Clary Pearce and the rest of the team, who have done amazing work. And so Oracon Isaacs, JFC City Care Joint Venture, WSP Opus and a couple of staff members who were integral to the project that are no longer working for council. So John Hannah and Gemma Dionie, who were heavily involved in driving that as well. So I don't, I know I've missed people, I can see people at the back there and it's just been really, really cool. And I tell you, you're going to organise a little bit of a, a little bit of a hootie at some point for everyone, which is really cool. So, yeah, so that's it really. I'm just going to put them on the, the front desk so we can send them during the meeting.
Okay, you've got a video as well here?
Yes, a 30 second video, which is one that all of the finalists had to put together a video.
Oh, awesome, awesome.
At the conference.
The Unicycle Cycleway is a major cycleway which runs between Christchurch Central City and the University of Canterbury. Unicycle travels through some of the most scenic areas in the west of Christchurch, including Hagley Park and Ricketon and Bush. This cycleway features a number of innovations, including the first dual gated barrier at a rail crossing in New Zealand. Unicycle integrates since the University of Canterbury with shared cycling and walking facilities.
Nice video from our mayor. That's lovely.
Look, I think we need to thank the Ricketson-Woggin-Horseball Community Board as well because it was a collaborative process and they helped the team and the committee get through a few little glitches there. So it was a really good collaborative process, yeah, great.
Great news and thanks to all you guys, she forgot you Brendan. That's lovely. Thank you very much indeed for that Sarah, they look awesome. Right, we're going to go on to Waikora. Jake? Was Sally too scared to come? Was Sally too scared to come?
She had a CDHB meeting on. So thank you for juggling the agenda and making room for me. So I'm happy to take most of the report as read and just highlight obviously the part A as well as a couple of other smaller things. So the part A was regarding the tea kiosk in Hagley Park. There were four, there were four proposals for, for the use of this. Three were deemed noncomer... three were deemed commercial and one was, was classified as non-commercial. We put a note on this to go to you guys that basically said we wanted some greater clarity from staff around what is commercial and what is non-commercial because we felt there was one proposal from the existing tenant that could have some, well that does have some non-commercial benefit and we just kind of wanted to be able to compare apples with apples and get some clarity about, about how those two things are defined. The other thing I wanted to pull out was the leave granted to to the community board and the district licensing committee for a lawyer to appear on our behalf around the 375 Ferry Road liquor store. So we're still just sort of waiting to hear a little bit more about this. As well as that, I wanted also to mention the Rose Chapel Historic Trust. So that's going out... Where is that? Sorry, I'm having trouble finding my notes. That's being list advertised soon anyway for the, for the use of that building. And...
I think you can book it now actually.
Sorry, so that one again? Oh, okay. Cool, okay, well that's, that's my report then.
Thank you very much indeed Jake, are there any questions from anyone? Sarah?
Not a question but just going to point out just on, oh, just on the screen behind Vicky's head. It was, we had the opening of the revenue share group cycleway over the holidays as well. And I've got to say that once those defidal bulbs are out, it's going to... I mean, people are loving it already, there are lots of people using it all the time. It's really high amenity, it's safe and once that whole route is complete, I would think that would be our next winner.
Yeah, that's next year's entry I think, I went for a bike, bike ride down, it's beautiful.
It's pretty cool, right?
Yeah. It's not quite as beautiful as the one in Ricketton but it's pretty good.
The town section isn't as great, is it?
It's actually stunning, it's really stunning, yeah, yeah. Pauline?
Can I just add to that too, that it's actually... That idea to run the cycleway down the median between the trees actually came in a bit later on and it was a really good idea but the tricky thing is to be able to do that without damaging the tree roots. So the whole way that they've done that has been fantastic. Something like 3,600 square metres of forest pavers. They've planted another 150 new trees where they're currently being planted and they've actually planted more defidal bulbs as well. So I think it is arguably the most beautiful one, but will be, the section. But it's, it's really special there and it's the one... But it's, it's really special there and it's a wonderful asset for Christchurch. So we really are starting to, to get the runs on the board with these cycleways. And as I said at the opening, everyone that's open is going to make it more easy for everyone to see what an incredible vision this is for the city. Once we get the thirteen connected cycleway routes finished, it's one project. It's an incredible visionary project and it's just going to be wonderful, but little by little it's starting to appear. And as Sarah said, Christchurch has been quite well respected around the country for having this vision and people are looking to us and we're very lucky that we're at the starting gate as we are because we're able to access that NZTA funding, which can be up to fifty percent, sometimes more. And it's a huge help. So we were, we were actually ready to go when all those announcements came out and with the Unicycle Way Fund as well. So, you know, Christchurch is winning here.
Two other things, two other things I just want to really quickly point out was we had a community service awards as well, which were a lot of fun. And also there was a joint community board seminar yesterday about alcohol licensing. So that information was valuable.
Jake, can I just pick you up on the liquor licensing thing? Does that mean that community boards can now appear at liquor licensing hearings?
Not to my understanding, no, no.
Okay. Okay. But you can have a legal representation. I think they've been given delegation to do that. Okay. Phil, sorry.
Thanks Vicky. Jake, I was going to ask you a similar question. Like when the board go to the appeals authority, are, is the board looking at making a submission or actually supplying evidence? Because that, that's come up as being a really crucial part to have the process right.
Sorry about that. My understanding is the board provided evidence to this in, as part of the first process. And there'll be a lawyer engaged to, because I understand that the next process is really looking at what was presented.
Perhaps I can comment. So the hearings, the chair of the hearings panel at that previous hearing gave leave for the community board to actually engage and provide evidence. It wasn't expected that they would do that beforehand, but that's what happened. And so there was a workshop yesterday on the roles, responsibilities of community boards in this, particularly these hearings. So you get some clarification of that. And it may well come back to council around deciding whether council delegates to community boards around providing submissions as opposed to supporting other, other community.
Thank you Carleen. I'm glad the point's been raised because in fact I was at the workshop and it just seemed to me that there was a lack of clarity by some on the distinction between, at this stage, whether we can, we give evidence or make a submission. So I'm just raising that.
Even a lack of clarity for me about it.
I know that, just making sure. In fact, we don't make the same mistake twice.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got Glen and then Tim. All right, Tim.
Just, just, and I, sorry, I apologise, I couldn't make the workshop, but there's a, because there is a clear difference between making a submission and evidence, because when you put in evidence, you've got to be prepared for cross-examination. So I think when we get advice, whether it's community board or councillors or whatever, it's all about preparation if you're going to step over that line from submission to evidence. So I'm not telling you how to suck eggs, but I mean, that's the difference.
You're absolutely right. Thanks. Thank you.
Jake, can I just say something else as well?
Go for it, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's really clear that council is delegated to community boards. The ability to seek leave to be heard at the initial district licensing hearing. When it goes to Allah for appeal, the community board can also seek leave. What we've done in this case in terms of Phillips Town is actually sort led with the council. So we're just having one lawyer representing both the community board and council. But it is kind of different. I think we need to be really careful that the community board is not there as a party. It's, it's there as a special, with special recognition on behalf of the council, the territorial authority. And there does need to be some clarity and some, I think, better guidelines around just that process. Because it is quite unclear even in the legislation itself around things like deadlines for when information needs to be provided, who should provide the information. One of the key questions that came around our community board at the initial district licensing hearing, well, should we have legal representation? And there was some confusion over that. So I think it would benefit from having some really clear guidelines around how community boards can be involved. And hopefully that workshop yesterday, which I obviously wasn't at, is a good start towards progressing some really clear guidelines.
Okay, thanks Jen.
We got that remit through local government conference, asking the government to look at tweaking the legislation to give more emphasis or weight to community use, which would be represented by the community board when these applications are lodged. So that would be tied in quite well to it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that. I'll put the motion to receive the community board report. And then if you want to, we'll deal with the tea kiosk as well. Is everybody okay with that? Since it affects your board. Okay, so I'll just put the, the, sorry. I have to have a mover and see if I can get those things. Dion moves and Sarah seconds. I'll put the, the, that. Those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed, carried. And would you like to do number four, number fourteen now, the tea kiosk, which was your, no problem with anyone? It seems that the staff and the community board are on the same side, same sta-
I mean, this, this came, I'll just, I'll just introduce it. It came to the community board. We had a discussion about what community use was and this recommendation is just saying, can we look at the, the items that were there? Are they community use and then bring that to the community board or back to the community board so that we can decide? And then that will come back to a further recommendation to the council. So this is really just a passing it through so that staff can give advice and then it goes back to the community board to discuss and then it'll come back to us.
Right. So the new, new recommendation is that the council issue a closed RFP process to both request for information applicants. This to include a definition of what constitutes a community use with relevant evaluation attributes in order to allow effective comparison. You've got it all there? Yeah, okay. Right. Moved Dion, seconded Sarah. No debate? Put that, those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed, carried. Thank you. I just wanted Jake to be around to hear that. Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to Finfa Monari Hayward. Sam, welcome. So this report's on page twenty nine.
Good morning. Well, thank you again for the chance to present our update for the month. There's just a couple of things I'll touch on, then I'll hand over to Aaron to talk through a couple of the slides on our presentation. And then we thought we'd be really kind and give you a video to finish off today. First of all, you'll see on page one of our report, we've obviously exercised our community board delegations. We've approved the two toilets at the Rota Reserve and Aaron will talk about that shortly. We've put some no stopping restrictions in on Helmore's Lane and we've obviously looked at our discretionary response fund as well. There's just a couple of things to just note for your attention. Firstly, the Jelly Park Recreation and Sports Centre, that's construction's still underway or the redevelopment there. And a follow-up from our last meeting was that our staff would send around some information to you after Jimmy's request on that timeline. So that's all going to plan. We've obviously got the Jeffreys Reserve Replacement Suction Tank coming up shortly as well. And I hope that's at our meeting on the twentieth of August. That alongside some work around the Glendobe Residents Association request. So we're working through that as well. We've had quite a number of public forums come along and present to us, which has been really good. You'll see under section six, there's been just a highlight of a couple of them that are there. And we'll touch on the Monarch Butterfly stuff shortly, which was quite interesting. As I mentioned at our last meeting, we had the community service awards as well, about two days before we presented last time. Again, we've just formally put that into the report for you. It was a really fantastic occasion and we've had really good feedback since. So we're really delighted with that. I might pass over to Aaron now to talk about the, the lake.
Yeah, thank you Sam. So the Lake Rariparapuana toilets, so this is a very, it's an increasingly popular reserve. Half of it is what was the former Waumari council landfill, which is a large kind of hill area there, there next to the Jet Ski Lake. About eighteen months ago, the issues there were around public kind of misbehaviour in a way. There's a little bit of antisocial behaviour and what have you. This past summer, it's just kind of exploded in popularity on a really nice day because of the recreational value. It's a very high amenity value for the community with, because it's, it's a lake, it's fresh water. The, the quality is absolutely superb. It's a very safe place for families to go and, you know, enjoy a little bit of water and recreation there. So there's, and there's a lot of other clubs that use that area. The, um, the recreational reserve has now got proposed toilets to be installed. So it's from about a health aspect that the toilet facilities have been improved. Currently, there's just, there's just portaloos that are there. So there's two sites, they're about seven hundred metres apart. So therefore there, there needs to be the two toilets there. The, the staff are asking that the toilets be connected to the main services for electricity, water and sewer. Therefore, there's a lot of, there's a, there's a high cost for the civil works construction. We've asked that staff go back and get further numbers on those, on those estimates when they came to the board. So hopefully they'll come back soon. In the meantime, we've asked that this coming spring and summer, that adequate measures be taken in consideration around toileting facilities and the recreation groups and that type of thing as, as best as possible.
Yeah, so one of the public forums I mentioned earlier was around monarch butterflies. And you probably think, what on earth is someone coming along to talk about monarch butterflies about? But we had Vicky Steele come along and present to us on a lot of work she's doing in her own capacity around, I guess, their ability to, to maintain that population in some of our parks. And what she'd done is a bit of research around it and, and literally going in the mornings and counting in the, in the evenings as well. And she determined that there's quite a few issues, particularly in Burnside Park, around their ability to be sustainable. And so we've referred that to park staff to work with her on. But we just thought we'd bring it to your attention to a really high level. It was quite a fascinating one in terms of rodents and that type of stuff. But you'll see on the left of that presentation up there, they've got these metal sheet bandings that they've tried at Abbey Park and we're hoping we can do the same at Burnside. So quite a cost effective measure to sort of mitigate something. But it's just one of those points, I guess, where we've got someone actively involved in the community, giving up their time to do it. And it was kind of adding real value to, to what we do. So we wanted to bring it to your attention. So Aaron will finish off by talking about the group of the month and then we can take questions.
So the group of the month, the Chinese, Christchurch Chinese Church, it was formed in nineteen eighty nine with about twenty five in the congregation. Since then, they've, they've grown. The, the group's now based at two eight six Briers Road in Brinwak. So that's opposite Gerry Brownlee's lectured office there. The physical location of the, of the church is actually in Papanui Ward now following the representation review. However, most of the congregation do come from the Fiducia Monari area. So we do provide a lot of the funding in that regard. And the organisation played a significant role in the aftermath of the twenty eleven earthquake. They took on responsibility of looking after many of the families of the victims in the CTV building who came from overseas. They provided accommodation, food and support. The police also held daily briefings with the families at the church. The photo on the right is actually a displaced boulder from the Port Hills, which local council staff and Sarah staff organised to be delivered to the church. It's now placed on the corner of the site and is a memorial for the victims of the earthquake. And just below that is also a time capsule buried and it's due to be lifted, I guess it's called, I think it's October twenty thirty nine. The church provides a variety of activities and programs, not just to the Chinese community, people of the community, but also a weekly community English language class. There's a weekly older adults education program with about sixty people attending each week. Those ages range from fifty to ninety years old. And there's also a Christmas in the car park, which is a delivery of goodie bags at Christmas time to the local Brinwak community. That's coming up in a video next. The, there's a variety of youth activities, tuition and peer support. There's a Friday night youth program, leadership program, basketball group and a high school youth group. A new project that they're starting in this past year is targeted at young people who don't have an interest in sport or recreation, but are keen on computers and art. So they're creating, they're running a creative media group who are part of this video that we're about to show you. So hopefully.
Christmas in the car park this year was great. We've done it a few years and it's our chance to take the message, the true message of Christmas outside the walls of the church, share with our neighbours. And it was just great to see the joy in the kids' faces and their parents and it was just wonderful this year.
So what I love about Christmas in the car park is it really brings the merry back into the Christmas, like Merry Christmas. And I think kids really show that. They're so joyful. You see them lining up for food, eating the food, face paint Batman, Spiderman, whatever thing goes on, you know, they're really enjoying it. And the bouncy castle, just seeing the joy in the kids' face. I mean, that's Christmas in the car park for me.
Thank you, that's lovely.
Cool. And just to finish off, just picking up on the, the alcohol seminar that was done last night, the combined board. Very informative. Thank you very much to my staff for coming along. It was an excellent seminar. The takeaway for, I feel our board was, I guess, around the successful objection to the application of an off licence at Trafford Street there last year. So now the community members that were very involved in that process have now gone to other areas of the city and helping support other members of the community around that. So my takeaway from the seminar there last night was probably for boards to stay within the two oh four, section two oh four aspect of the, of legislation and support the community. And instead of submitting evidence, or instead of bringing evidence, just make a submission and support of the community. Keeps things relatively cut and dry. And then you support the other communities, the, the members of the community that are objecting to the, to the submission.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Very full report. And just out of time now.
Great.
So thank you very much indeed. Aaron's going to move it and Ref's going to second it. Yeah?
Right.
I'll put that we received the report. Those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed, carried. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Indeed, the video was stunning. Um, thank you. And Ben Spunachola, Cam?
Thank you. It is very difficult to hear this morning. I don't know whether it's because I'm getting older. But all of the speakers this morning, it's been quite difficult to, to hear them speaking.
Is it a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, it's a bad thing because we can't hear you.
Right, okay. We'll, we'll talk loudly, right?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, no problem. This is on page five of your report, Sam.
Where has winter gone? But this morning, we have got a, well, it's a report with lots of things that have gone on over the, of the last month and a variety of issues, but no part A's in it. So I want to bring up this morning and just highlight some things. The Whaharawa Restoration Whakaraupo, Akaroa Wharf, um, this is a hundred and fifty reusring and the Semper Tree Working Group and the Akaroa Service Centre. So if we start with the Whaharawa Restoration in the Whakaraupo Cultural Reserve, it's quite a challenging heading there. But this is an amazing project that goes back some time. It's a partnership with the Department of Corrections to restore a carved whaharawa. Now, the whaharawa is that, that, that up there that's got two, two things on the side of it and then over the top is a, is a plank that sort of provides a roof to it. But it's an amazing carving. The original whaharawa was created as part of the Turning Point two thousand. Um, the original Waua Hora was created as part of the Turning Point Two Thousand Canterbury Waitaha Events to celebrate the millennium, so there was one there, but it was, um, deteriorating and disrepair, so this, um, has been repaired over the last three or four years, and it was, um, rededicated on, on the twenty-sixth of July. But the important part about it was that it was done with the rest, with, um, with the, um, with a prisoner, um, who, Department of Corrections, who worked on this many thousands of hours to do it, um, and who is very proud of his work that he's done. Now, that, that is a, an entrance to a cultural garden, and it contains plants of cultural value, uh, particularly medicinal plants. Um, and back in two, in, in two thousand, when this was, um, originally put in, the gardens itself, there was nothing there, so in twenty years, the, the gardens have, have, have absolutely flourished, was planted by the, um, the community, um, with land care assistance, and Anne Joloff has been involved throughout this long period of time, so it's great to see that come to fruition. So the next one is, um, the Akaroa Wharf, now the Akaroa Wharf features in a lot of, um, a lot of photographs, as you can see there, beautiful part, historic wharf and things, but we have, um, have a few issues around it, uh, that everybody wants to be on it at the same time, um, and that we have also got commercial users, recreational users and the public using it. So there's been an issue, few issues with, with things on it that shouldn't be there, so we've been having a bit of a, a tidy up, um, and there's been fish crates and things that we've been asked to remove from it, and we've also implementing, um, some fro- smoke free signage, um, in pre- in preparation for the cruise ship season. Uh, historically, tourists get off the boat and they light up immediately, so we would just like to encourage them to, to walk across the wharf safely and, and not light up as soon as they get off it. So we're looking at also smoke free signs around the other areas of the town as well. So that was really triggered by a recent, um, highlighting of it through your council process, and we, we looked at what we had in, in Akaroa, and where we should implement that. The next one is about Armistice Day, the Hundredth Anniversary, now this beautiful Wharf Memorial is, um, owned by the community, it's one of a few in New Zealand, it's managed by a, a particular committee, um, a reserve, a, um, Wharf Memorial Committee of dedicated people, we have restored it and it cost about nine hundred thousand dollars to repair it following the earthquakes, uh, we found the funding, uh, ourselves and, and did that repair with the project manager, and so Armistice Day is coming up on the eleventh, the eleventh in November, and we, um, they had asked us for some funding, and we have provided them with some funding, um, and we've also written, well, we've provided them with a thousand dollars, or fifteen hundred dollars, and we are underwriting it for a further thousand dollars to have that particular ceremony, but if you're coming to Akaroa, have a look at it, it is the centre of the town, magnificent, maintained beautifully to botanical stand- garden standards, it's just an, an amazing setting in the town. And this is, um, a, a, a good, uh, story as well, this is, you know, we listen to the radio at the moment, and there are so many poor stories about the council, and I feel like hiding under the table. This is one of those stories where we had a lot of trouble of getting this group over the line, they, they were continually dissatisfied what was, with what was going on, and suddenly something happened, and we found the right people for that team to work with in council, and they now have got a sound working relationship between the Christchurch City Council and the community, just how they should be happening, um, each respecting each other and getting on with the job, and they've had a couple of working bees already. It is an old cemetery, there are eighty-six identified broken headstones for repair and restoration, not owned by families now because those families are well gone, but it may cost about thirty thousand dollars to repair a headstone, um, and they're also planning for a memorial entrance, um, undergoing for council consent, so that's a good story, a great story about another partnership that, that has, um, has just gone so well from a disorganised, I mean, from a disgruntled group to something that's positive and, and a good story to tell. And the last one is, um, reopening of the service centre, Akaroa Service Centre, now this is amazing story too, it's, we're going to get our service centre back, um, for us. So this is out of the former Akaroa Post Office, it was built in nineteen fourteen, and was, and is a replacement of an earlier building, building, built in eighteen fifty-six. So it was, uh, it's just a, a large domestic building, but the interior still has original decorative plaster and mouldings, and plaster on the walls, and it's got a polished wall, uh, of polished architrays, windows and door frames, so it is a magnificent old building, just alongside the Wharf Memorial, the Wharf Memorial's on the left, over the other side of the road is the, the museum and the, um, the old bank building, so it's, it's the centre of Akaroa, and we're just so proud of that, that area. The service centre moves back to it on, um, tomorrow, the third, and the opening ceremony is on the eighth of August from two P M to four P M. So there are some, um, residents, well, not residents, um, businesses that will go into that building, Akaroa District Promotions, I think, is going into one of the rooms, Civil Defence, might our, local civil defence team in Akaroa might have, um, some space there as well, and New Zealand Propost are just working through the proposal at the moment to go into the, the right hand side there, the, um, the, um, no, not sorry, in the right hand, in the middle of the building. But, um, the colours look a bit different, but they are, are based on the, on the colours that the building was, was early on, painted earlier on, so it's got a clock there in the middle up the steps, there, uh, an old clock that has been nurtured and managed over the years and is back up and ticking away, so, um, we're very pleased to have our service centre opened again, and it has some new modern, uh, great modern facilities and that hope I won't drive, be able to drive, I won't have to drive to town, council staff mightn't have to drive out to Akaroa either, they'll just, um, link up and, and, um, meet with us as appropriate, so, um, we look forward to using it and having our first meeting in there later in the year. So that's, um, the highlights that I've, just a few things that were picked out, everything of course is important in this, um, and our community as well and evolved in our events, but I'd just love the community to hear the lovely stories that we do hear at these mornings that come, and we should be looking at how we can get our, our community involved in, in some of these still things that are going on.
Thanks very much, Pam, is there any questions, Glen?
Um, thank you, uh, just over, uh, eight point three, Pam, smoke free, uh, Akaroa, our smoke free in public places policy-
Yes.
-already includes the precincts around our facilities-
Yes, yes.
-so that's already there with relation to, uh, the, um, the service centre-
Yes.
-uh, and the museum, with the wharf and the library, I'm sure we can work with smoke free Canterbury and the other groups we've worked with to negotiate a voluntary approach to that, we've had a lot of success. Um, along with the cycling, actually, we are recognised nationally for our, uh, extension over our, um, smoke free in public places policy and the way we're going about it, so if you would like us to set up some meetings, we could do that.
Yeah, we'd love that, we'd love that discussion, the issue that we have got is that would a cruise ship person, would a tourist actually know what smoke free actually meant, so we need to perhaps convey that in the appropriate manner to our town.
Yeah, I think we need to communicate with the cruise lines, um, so when, you know, cruise ship births, passengers receive a, you know, several announcements, so that could be just part of, uh, um, you know, the understanding when they come in, into Christchurch, Littleton, Akaroa, that, you know, these policies exist.
Okay, thank you, and thank you very much indeed, we've just-
Oh, I had one question, okay?
Sorry. Oh, great.
Can you hear me? Yep. So I just-
I'm pining for your answer.
I just wanted to check, um-
Sorry, Annie.
On six, six point three, um, it, it's reported that one of the dictations asked that, um, all licence structures on the wharf be removed, I wasn't quite clear from Pam's presentation whether that is being done, and I also just wanted to clarify whether that's a decision that the board makes, or whether that's a decision for council management?
Yeah, Annie, I think that this was a recommendation that the board made, and it was up to the council to implement it, um, and it wasn't the, the one that I was referring to in my presentation here this morning, this is a much larger issue that we have got with the, um, with the Black Cat and the users of the wharf, so it's, it's going through a process, and the board has recommended that all of those structures that are not, um, well, those structures that are illegal, that, that haven't been consented, be removed from the wharf. Uh, we haven't actually heard Black from Black Cat, how they received that information, um, but that was the decision that was made, and we need to work through that now, okay?
So can we just clarify, is that, is it up to the community for them to take that sort of enforcement action or decision, or is that something that council management should be doing?
It's council, we're not doing it, council are doing it, council staff are enforcing it.
Have you had a res- so, and our council staff, do you have a timeframe for them enforcing it?
I'm not aware of a timeframe, but it is, it is being enfor- uh, I'm aware that it's being enforced.
Right, okay, very last question, Phil, because we are over-
No, it's not a que- you may have well have been going to say this too, Vicky, but I, I just want to thank Pam and the board, especially for the support and your communities of, of our heritage buildings, you know, it just so much adds to the quaintness, and I'm sorry we can't come to the opening, I think we've got other meetings on, Pam, but clearly your bo- and just when you go to Akaroa, it just, it stands out, so that's-
Right, thank you, thank you.
It's great work on the board's behalf and the community.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we moved, uh, Tim, seconded Anne, I'll put the report, those in favour please say aye, those opposed, carried, and welcome to the air.
Thank you very much. Do you want to take your, um, computer?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Your emails might be more interesting, mind. Good, and welcome, I've got my red and black on today, just to remind people to wear their red and black tomorrow, um, yes, so, but tomorrow's the big day, so for everyone to wear red and black, so I'm putting the challenge out there, and, um, now I'd like to invite the Coastal Beowood Ward to-
Good morning, Leanne.
To your report, thank you.
And council, councillors.
Senator June.
Do you want to get on to the, um, uh, the first one obviously is, um, Dellington Bridge Safety Concerns, uh, the community came to us, um, the recent association etcetera, and said there's some big concerns about safety and accidents, there was an accident just recently, so we're actually working with them, and we have an onsite meeting with an engineer planned, so it's, uh, something we're looking at at the moment. Well, the New Brighton clock tower, as you probably know, it's had scaffolding around it for quite a long time, and we're now actually seeing some action, which is great, uh, the, the faces, you can see the clock tower face, they've been taken out and they have to be, um, repaired, so I guess it's a pretty old type of system, so it'll take a while, but there has been some damage found in the actual, um, building itself, and, uh, that's been repaired, so it looks like it's about a year long job. Uh, behind that, of course, you know, we've just had the, um, excuse me, the, uh, Brighton pier fixed, and I just must tell you that, uh, in the first month it was open, after it was opened again, we had eight thousand plus people in the first month, and the numbers are building up again, which is great to see something positive happening again. Uh, the tree removals, South New Brighton Park, uh, this has been an ongoing issue for quite a while, we had an, we had a council arborist come down just recently and had a look at the trees, and I think I mentioned at a previous meeting, I was quite concerned, about thirty odd trees coming down, and this stage, the, the arborist seemed to think there could be up to a hundred that need to come down, uh, I think we've, um, scaled that back now to the most urgent ones, which is about nine, but it's, it's a little bit concerned because, um, a lot of the trees that are dying are on the other side of the walkway, and they're dying not from salt intrusion through the ground, but the, the water's coming in on particularly high tides and ponding around the tree roots, so we're now getting into, obviously you can see the damage to the estuary edge, that's erosion, and, uh, it's obviously a, a big issue, but it's a concern we're losing, losing trees further in with the ponding of the salt water, because, you know, salt water's just, as I said, it's just sitting there for up to a week, after, after a big event tide, so we'd love to work forward on that one, it's, uh, it's just going on, going saga, and we don't seem to be getting anywhere with it. Uh, this one is, um, this is the four short, this is a combined thing with, um, it's got D C L and Skate Public Art, and they're getting together to try to find out what they can do, will come up some ideas, what they can do with that particular area, as you know, it's always been a bit untidy, it's where we have the ANZAC Day, so the idea is to see what they can do and see what improvements can be made, the community board or some of the members are working with that as well. Oh, this is the hub, the, look, this was a great event, uh, opened up on a really chilly Sunday, one of the few cold days we have down there, but, uh, it, uh, it was a cracker day as far as people coming along, uh, Glen was there and Joe, and in fact all the community board and councillors were there, great turnout, um, as you can see there, we had that, we had a picnic on the other side of the road, there's been a steady stream of people coming to the Regenerate Hub, a lot of people are not going because they think nothing's going to happen, and, and that's quite sad really, and I'm having to kind of almost knock on doors and convince people to come along, I think it's because it's been so long winded, that there's a bit of despondency in the area, but again, at the same time, there are people coming along, so, and that's why I, I think, you know, going on a bit further than that, the community needs some quick wins, just, you know, there's, there's not a lot of hope out there at the moment, which is, uh, is quite sad to hear, I believe, I think so. Is that about it on that one? Oh, yeah, this other one here is, um, obviously the issue of South Shore, um, and as you probably all know, um, you know, there's, there's cases there where people can't build, and there's still people there who haven't been able to build and have still got a lot of money tied up in their sections and consenting and all this stuff, and can't build, and I don't know how you'd feel, but if you had a lot of money tied up and you don't know how you can, uh, get out of the, out of this position, because you cannot build, you cannot sell your section, you're three hundred thousand dollars down, so there was a case, as you know, over in Reckless last week, that went for the person who was trying to build, but it didn't really set an example, which was probably disappointing, so, look, it's something, I think as a council, the community board, council and residents have got to work together and get some of these things fixed, there's too many half finished projects, or projects that aren't going anywhere at the moment, and it's affecting the community, and, and this is why I think the numbers are down at the Regenerate, they could be a lot more because, you, you know, one of the things you've got to do out there is give people some hope, and we're not, we're not doing that, we're not getting projects finished. Um, people want to know they've got a future for their families, themselves, and also hope, so they're the two most important things, future and hope, if we can give them a bit of that, we'll move forward, but until we get something sorted out, estuary edge, South Brighton, South Shore building, we're going to have this clashing, it's, it's not the right way to move forward, so I, I'm not sure the right way forward, I'm not sure what it is, but we have to work together somehow and get at least some of these issues solved, otherwise we're going to be coming back to this meeting all the time, talking about the same things. That's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, uh, Sarah.
Thank you, and, uh, thanks, Tim, I was just wondering if there's a, a communication issue here, so, I mean, there's always, I mean, across the city, there's a never ending list of things that need doing, um, but, you know, we've opened Taurakiui two, the pier's fixed, you've got your brand new playground, the, um, hot salt water pools are on the way.
Yes.
Are we not celebrating that enough, if you think that people are thinking that we're not doing anything for the area?
And I, I cannot speak highly enough about those, they're wonderful, they are, but it's, but those things are, are like pluses, but when you start playing with people's lives and livelihoods, that's the difference.
Because the message you're saying is that people feel like we're not doing anything.
No, no, I probably, okay, and I'll correct that-
Yeah.
-there is great things happening in the east, we've got the pools, we've got the pools, the schools, you know, there is some great things happening, I'm not talking about that, those are pluses, but there are some minuses, and minuses are-
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so don't get me wrong, we're people are very thankful for those, and there is hope in that respect, but I'm talking about the people that some of these things act- actually affect, like limbs, um, insurances, it, it's a different issue to what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Very, very grateful and very thankful, you won't get anybody who'll say anything against those things.
So I think maybe, um, I mean, there's the regeneration stuff, but actually the, the, um, those sort of coastal hazards issues of district plan, getting that sorted.
Yeah, well, there's a coastal, there's, there's, we're seeing a bit of loggerheads over the estuaries in South Brighton and in South Shore, and we've got this building issue.
Yeah.
Now, the, uh, South Brighton, South Shore probably have the most issues at the moment-
Yeah.
-so, you know, I shouldn't really call the, I'm not really referring to the whole east, I'm referring to a particular area that has issues.
But there is a process that's going on there, so, um, we've got the, uh, um, but a, but a methodology has been devised by the community, for the community and with the community, around how we engage on these really tough issues, because they're not easy, you know, and I don't think that there's a, there's a, um, a magic solution that, uh, is gonna solve for, uh, now-
that is going to solve for now and for the future. And the, the whole approach around adaptive management means shared knowledge, shared understanding and a shared vision for the future. But also a really powerful capacity within a community to adapt and change direction. Because we don't actually know what the future holds and it's a vulnerable environment on both sides of the estuary. Although I'd rather be on your side than on the other side.
Oh, I agree with you there, but look, no, look, I agree with you there, but the majority, I mean, the residents themselves, most of them live day-to-day and this is what's affecting them day-to-day. And, you know, I know we're talking about the future and I totally understand that and I know that's what we're working towards, but you know, I'm talking at ground level, I'm talking with the residents all the time, this is what I'm hearing.
No, and I, I talk to them a lot too.
Yeah, and it's, it's not.
Some of them are still speaking to me.
They just don't feel like they're moving forward. I mean, let aside what you said before about the good things that are happening, but for the people that it affects, it's really, honestly, we're all concerned about their health.
But do we, as a council, really want to leave it to the insurance industry to decide the future of coastally envi- coastal environments in Christchurch?
No, we don't, I mean, we need to get it sorted out, but it's just.
But, but do we have to work with the insurance industry? Yes, we do.
We do.
Because they are going to be doing their own assessments, they are going to be determining what is vulnerable. They are going to be determining what they're going to charge by way of excesses and what they're going to charge for premiums. And they are going to decide not to cover some things, so we need to, we need to be quite collaborative in this space. The reinsurers have been looking at this for a very, very long time. To be honest, they probably had never heard of Christchurch before September two thousand and ten, but they do now. And they're very aware of multiple hazards. So it's not just one hazard, it's multiple hazards. And having conversations with communities that are already still stressed because of the effects of the earthquakes, which were still not resolved, is a very, very tricky thing to do. Which is why we've gone for a co-designed collaboration really around engaging the public in what is going to be, I hope, a template for the rest of New Zealand for dealing with coastal environments. But, you know, we're on a journey and we're, 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 we're a wee way down the track, but not very far down the track. So I'm extremely hopeful that the model that we've developed will actually really help develop understanding about those environments. But how you build communities that are capable of acceptance of the need to change when that change occurs. And that may be many, many, many years in the future and another generation. But we have to set it up now for those decision-making environments to exist.
You're right, but, I mean, one of the, obviously, the issues with insurance is we've got a temporary bund fixing, protecting people in South Shore. Well, insurance companies don't recognise temporary as a real fix, so that's one of the issues we've got as well.
Yep, and these are the issues which will be able to be resolved over, over time as we look at the different components. I mean, you know as well as I do that the entire estuary environment is not the same. There are different components of it, there are, and certainly the spitter's different on the, on the beach side with an accreting beach. So there are, there are multiple issues that need to be resolved down there and it's not just a one-size-fits-all solution.
I think, you know, because we, the people down there have been living with it for so long, it's just a sheer frustration of it's been getting harder and harder and nothing seems to be getting done. And that's why I'm, I'm quite disappointed that there should be more people going to this Regenerate Hub. They are going, but because they think nothing's going to happen, that's a terrible attitude to have and that's what unfortunately some people have.
Yeah, but Sarah's point was right, is that it's communication, communication, communication. And, and I, I do understand that there is some communication really to be lifted in the next week or so. So to, to really drive things, help people understand the environment that they're living in and the challenges of resolving some of those issues for the future. It is a hard area, but I'm not, and I'm not going to pretend that it's not, but we're absolutely with them and we don't want to have the insurance industry make decisions for the future. We want to work with the insurance industry, but primarily we want to work with communities so that they understand they have to be adaptive, living in that environment.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think that could happen, look, and I want to make it quite clear, you know, what was said before. There are some great things happening in our side of town, fantastic things, so don't get me wrong, but, you know, with, with good things, we've also got some bad things. I'm trying to keep it in balance here, but you cannot forget that there's, with the good things, there's also some very big difficulties for people.
Yep.
So, as I said, it's not, I'm not doing a moan, I'm just saying there are issues out there and there's some great things happening.
And I'm, I'm also trying to say that, that we do hear those, we're very aware of them and we really do want to enable communities to take control of what are major decisions that are going to affect the future living environments in those coastal areas. And it's not just in your area, but on the other side of the estuary as well, and then all around the Banks Peninsula, so. And actually, New Zealand. Yeah, I'm sorry, but I, I've kind of overdone it, but.
Just wondered that, it's because the wheels turn so slowly, but there's so much investigative work that needs to be done.
I know.
And study, so it takes a long, long time, we've been working on this area for years. So it's about conveying that to the people, that work is being done, but you can't see it yet.
Yeah.
So whether we get some form of a forum or work with Regen to.
No, but there is, there is work and we've all been briefed on work that's been done. And that is going to be going out into the community for them to be looking at in the next couple of weeks, so.
And there's, there's also confusion in the community regarding the role of council and Regenerate Christchurch, so. And that's often confusion everywhere, so we need to address that as well and try and let people know that we are working together on this.
Yes. The advantage of the regeneration strategy and, you know, Regenerate Christchurch is leading the work. The advantage of a regeneration strategy is that we have the, the ability to change aspects of our district plan through a regeneration plan. So it, it is a better approach, it is a way more engaged approach and it doesn't involve multiple appeals to the environment corps. So it's, it's a much better planning environment for actually dealing with challenging issues where we're looking to the future and not just looking at the present-day environment.
No, well, thank you for your time.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I just, sorry, Leanne, I just, Leanne, I just wanted to make one quick comment on that report. Yep.
Hello.
Is that okay?
Yep. Oh, do you want to make a comment? I mean, sorry, I forgot that you were there and it's, um.
Well, several other people have, so. It's very quick, I just wanted to, just to praise, I think the idea of setting up local spaces where people can go and get information is really positive. So, so setting up local shops or pop-up shops, pop-up spaces in communities where people can go is actually really good. And I think we should be considering doing more of it.
But that's why they've, they've got.
I just want to acknowledge, I think that's.
That's why they've got that, yeah.
I just wanted to, I thought that was a really good idea.
Yes.
Thank you.
Regenerate Christchurch has done that. Right, Sprayden Cashmere Community Board. Oh, sorry. Glenn, Glenn would like to move. Okay.
Why, it's flashing on and off.
They did it automatically.
You'll notice in the report that we need to, the need to get the agencies together over those working around the red zone with the community, a few events and activities taking them by surprise. The Gayhurst Road Bridge, we've just got a bit of a discrepancy between the residents' experience and the engineers' report on that, so we have to. That's why we're having the onsite meeting. And with the Avenside Girls and Shirley Boys zoning, while the ministry's come out with the interim zone, the preference is still for certainty. So it's a little bit like what we've been talking about over the South Shore and Southway Brighton. Residents want certainty and permanence in a difficult situation. So you could, you could say really that, that, you know, that lack of certainty isn't confined to, to one place. People want to know post-quake where they stand and, and that's basically, I think, the issue for many over there.
So moved by Glenn, seconded by Aaron, I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Now we'll have Sprayden Cashmere Community Board.
All right, Tato, um. Just wanted to mention briefly, apropos Waimea Fendleton, when they talked about the monarch butterflies, we've had the same person in our ward commenting about the number of butterflies that have been killed. And we've given the project two hundred and fifty dollars from our off-the-ground fund to ring the relevant trees with steel to stop the rats getting up and killing the butterflies. We have, like other places do, significant trees in various parts of our ward that house the butterflies over winter and it's been quite apparent that they're not there this winter. I just want to comment briefly before we start on the, the grants. It's just, it's just the difference between a smaller ward and, a smaller board area, sorry, and the rohi of the larger boards is that our grants took up a page this year and it used to be several pages. And we do miss those projects in those areas and those suburbs that we have lost. And, but we still contribute, for instance, to Christchurch South Community Gardens Trust who's over the way in central now, but whose work benefits our community too. But we hope that if there's any more redrawing of the boundaries, that the board areas become more equal. We are in the middle of the, of the longstanding riverbank stabilisation programme and the water engineers came to see us again, as they always do, to present brilliantly, as they always do, on the changes that are going to be occurring further down the Hesketh River in terms of our bank stabilisation. It is remarkable, some of the changes that are occurring to the Hesketh, the widening of the river is really apparent in some of our areas now. And it demonstrates how the rivers were deliberately narrowed and how that has contributed to the flooding that has occurred in recent years. And the widening of the river gives it much more natural appearance. When we walked from the service centre at Ekonam over to look at the river, the river was tumbling down between its banks. And it looked very, that doesn't look as natural as it's going to look because of the rocks that they have put in to stabilise the banks. But growth of, of the plantings will make a difference. But the river was tumbling down opposite the service centre, you almost felt as though you could have gaited, not me of course, but in a kayak and have a race down the river. And the outward appearance of the river is much more natural and we're seeing, we're all really seeing the benefits of it. It's a pity that we can't even make them wider. In some areas, some of our rivers, of course, drains instead of being a natural-looking river. It'll be interesting to see if and when they do changes, for instance, in the Sprayden Domain, it would be interesting to see it. Looking with reference to its, the banks in the Sprayden Domain, if it goes anywhere near that. But it's a pleasure to have the drainage guys doing a presentation on this and a consultation. And the community generally speaking responds really well when the drainage guys respond. They also consult with us on their plantings. Our board favours native tree plantings and especially the noble trees. If we can get a totura or kaheke teer in, we will. And we have had support from the water engineers on that as well. And apropos of that, we often see, far too often actually, contractors putting in random trees in random places on our riverbanks, they just appear. And they've got no, there's, there's no design or seeming intent. And one cypress appeared down at the Hesketh near the Ashgrove Reserve. The Ashgrove Reserve is recent, the Lower Cashmere Residents Association has recently become the kaiteaki of the Ashgrove Reserve and they're restoring the native plantings in it and doing such a good job. And there are three kauri in there, for God's sake. And so, so they're working really hard in there and all of a sudden a cypress appears. And they asked why and we had a great response from the arborist who has had the cypress removed. But I don't know why those random plantings occur. Well, we launched on July the fourth, the age-friendly Sprayden Cashmere, um, project. When I hear the words age-friendly, I want to rest my head gently on the desk and have a quiet dose. That's what the senior, it emanates from Wellington and the Senior Citizens Office calls it age-friendly. I do hope we change it. I made an introductory remark that referred to the fact that this generation that is aging now are the generation that invented sex, drugs and rock and roll, and I've often said that before. And this is a generation that was a generation when generations weren't talked about. And, and when this group were born in post-World War Two, generations weren't remarked on, teenagers didn't exist. Generations now exist, ad infinitum. And this generation isn't going to tolerate the patronising crap that gets delivered to older people. I have great hope that this generation makes a nuisance of itself, as they have done before. And I'm hoping that they'll lead the way for the aging generations to come, of which you are all members. And that they will cause a bit of a stir in our neighbourhood to ensure that aging is not treated the way it has been in the past and is treated as inevitable and bold and fun. It's actually fun and I can tell you from firsthand experience. So we did have, we had Diane Turner from the Senior Citizens Office and Simon Templeton from Age Concern and Helain Mountner presenting to the audience, but I'm hoping that, and, and they did a great job and it was great to have them there. But I am hoping that the group, when it's convened and starts at work, starts to think adventurously and with excitement about the aging. And just apropos of that, I, yesterday at, and there were people there from here. The Housing Network had Kay Savile-Smith speaking about the aging and rental properties. And the decline in home ownership from the beginning of this century, two thousand to now, is startling. And it's most startling in the forty to forty-five age group area. So the housing issues, thank God the Christchurch City Council of all local bodies leads in talking about housing and social housing and I'm really personally very grateful for that. The Sprayden Cashmere, we used to have, for instance, an event in Barrington Park. But the staff recognised, and the staff recognised this before we elected members probably, that it no longer looked like an event that was led by the community and was a supporter of community development. They recognised that the, that the people who participated in this event were becoming increasingly commercial and, and there was no longer groups of people enjoying community development. So they've, we've, we've canned that particular event, but asked the community to think of events that they care about and that would support community development in their area. And to support that, the community development staff have a get-go, get-set-go workshop to talk to community groups about community development and about event management. And we've had considerable success in the, for instance, the Rowley community in developing the, the project around the basketball lights and in making the Hoonhei Fiesta a much larger event. And the rugby league has become involved, including the Pacific Festival. And the schools in that area have become involved. And the schools in that area have become involved because the, the, the cultural event that's held for schools is too expensive for them. It's too expensive for them, so they're developing their own program around Hoonhei Fiesta. And the community development team in our ward are working to support that energy and drive that's coming from the community. And we, we are finding it very, very interesting. And I actually must get to go to one of those workshops myself and actually learn something about it too. Um, we, we had the community. We, we had, the community board pamphlet is being developed after Mel's nagged for six years, I think. And we'll be going out with the, with the second rates notice and will no doubt, after people have sat down quietly on receiving their rates notice and might become more conscious in terms of reading something, will no doubt be taken up with interest by the people who receive it. And the final thing, on the same day as the senior citizens, sorry, as the age-friendly, we presented to Jeremy Agar of the Summit Road Society, and there he is, a very large cheque for $45,000 for predator-free. And we were absolutely delighted. Jeremy had a tear in his eye. He has worked so hard on this project. It was led by him. The Summit Road Society was originally a bit thoughtful about the effort it might take and whether they could find the financing for it. It requires really good statistical collecting. But on the, on the weekend after Jeremy got, took the cheque off us for $45,000 for predator-free, there were over 200 people at a workshop at St Martin's School on how to become predator-free. It's a triumph in our area. I know it's a triumph elsewhere in Canterbury. But in our area, we've taken this issue on at a personal level and we are thrilled with the results. Thrilled with the Summit Road Society, very proud of Jeremy's work and the work that he's put into the Summit Road Society and the wider community everywhere on predator-free. And there are some of the kids as well who got some t-shirts for a separate prize on how, on, on drawing.
Designer t-shirt.
Designer t-shirt. And they got separate prizes on the designs of their t-shirts about predator-free. So, and is that it from us?
Yes, it is, I think.
Fantastic. Tim, you'd like to move that and Phil would like to second it?
And, and just note, Leanne, our group, we didn't take up the time. You know, the time? We, we only took up our time. We didn't take up time.
No.
No. We were on punctual, punctual.
You stopped it dead on 10 minutes. Thank you. But congratulations to the board. I just think going out and, and actually engaging with the community about how they can take control of things, it's, it's wonderful. So really, congratulations.
Credit to the staff on that. Very much credit to the staff.
Phil, Pauline.
Carolyn, look, thank you for your report. And you touched on, I guess, some quite high-level strategic issues too, if it comes to older people and shorter, their housing being unaffordable. And it's just how, and perhaps, and you, you certainly acknowledge that council has a strong history in that social housing area. I'm just wondering, while I consider it, how in fact we have all this joined up? The work that our housing committee do, and Glenn was at the seminar yesterday too, and, and then the, the group, the age-friendly group in Kashmir. And then, of course, what we really need is that, as Kay Saville said, is how in fact we make sure that the silos at central government level are broken down so that every government department is involved with this issue. But perhaps that's something for future exploration, so we actually become strategic about this.
Yep. Pauline?
Oh, yeah, look, I'm really concerned about this monarch butterfly business because when it was first brought to my attention was the Emily Park issue. And I think I forwarded to the appropriate board because we've lost Emily Park. But as a staff response, they could not actually 100% confirm that it was rats. Has your board asked those questions about what it actually is?
The same woman came, was in our board area and she is very firm that it is rats because they, the wings are left and the bodies are gone.
Yeah, but even though, I know she gave me all those photos, but even though staff have come back and said they can't confirm that it is actually rats, so is anyone doing any more investigative work on this?
Not that I know of.
It's not in our board. So do they think it is rats? And the other thing is we need to get the feedback on whether the rings are actually working and, because it seems to be that it's citywide.
It is.
So you've got Spraden, you've got Emily Park and Burnside Park, just the three that have been noted.
No, well, Beckenham Park's got a huge monarch butterfly tree with no monarchs in it this year.
Yeah, rats don't recognise the ward boundary.
No, but what I'm saying is that, and it could actually be a, it could actually be an aftermath, it's a quake as well because we did have a huge rat explosion of population in the CBD and they're probably moving outwards. There used to be a really big tree in the Booood Pegasus area around that walkway, around Lake Terrace Road. There was a big tree there with monarchs in it. I don't know if they're still there.
I think, Pauline, we should get a staff member who's just hanging around doing nothing. And, but it would be nice to know though.
I'm just trying to work out with the chief executive, is, is there a committee that this can get a report back to? So that, I mean, there's, there's a working group going on. So there's a working group within council. So it is being addressed.
Okay, probably through ITI would be, the environment would be.
We could have a monarch chair.
Well, I'd be, I'd be happy for it to come through mine. I'm passionate about it.
Yeah, okay. So, so is it, is it possible to arrange a briefing for the, for the ITI committee just on where the program's up to?
Great, thank you.
We have a, we have a park ranger in our ward who's been involved in this issue. And so it would be good to tap into those people who already have some knowledge, like.
Yeah.
Which park ranger can you remember?
Yeah, the, the, Cullen says, Cullen says that there is, there is a group within council that is addressing this. So we'll just get an update report through to ITI and then we can refer it to all of the community boards because it will be across the city.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. That's very helpful. Thank you. We're moving right along. So it's been moved by Tim, seconded by Phil. I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried.
Thank you.
And the next one is the Papanoi Innis Community Board.
Go the Crusaders just quietly. Okay, so.
Red and black, very good.
Red and black, yep. Thank you very much for having us along today. I will look at this while we are talking. Thank you. Not a lot actually. I just want to say that I think that the Fendleton Waimeahe ward board has set a very high bar with their presentations today, but quite clearly has too much time on their hands and possibly too much budget, so. Well, they have, video for God's sake. Yeah, look, there's a lot happening in the community at the moment with community groups and youth agencies in the area. One organisation that we have a lot to do with and has a lot to do with us is the Papanoi Youth Development, which continues to provide brilliant programs and events in partnership with the local youth agencies to Oraho, the Belfast Community Network and North City. And PYD's a standout youth facility in Christchurch and it was built in partnership, which of course is really important and it strengthens the, the organisation and those involved. It was a partnership 11 years ago between the Christchurch City Council and the Anglican Church. And they provide within PYD for the youth in the area, a craft room, a radio station, a climbing wall, basketball courts, computer suites, Playstation room and recording studios. So it's a really fantastic facility for the youth in our area. And they're very well-connected as well and well-respected and trusted because that's a really important part of the relationship too. They have a new program at PYD. It's called Pikiaki, which is Ascend Into New Heights. And it offers breakfast and mentoring sessions along with a life skills program called Legacy. And it operates out of Casebrooke Intermediate School. And it also works together with some reasonably high-profile sports people too, which is a, a great connection to have. Two of the things happening in our ward at the moment is, well, this is an extra one actually. It's, this is our St Albans Park and Pavilion project. The pavilion is ahead, well, the, the project is overall behind, but only because of the wet weather and what the effect is on the, on the grass growing. And I mean, you could canoe out there at one stage last month. But the pavilion is just about done and we've got a board visit to the pavilion this Friday. And this was put together, the program was developed, the building was, was signed off after talking to groups in the area and finding out what they needed in the building. And that was a really good process because I think the board kind of went, yeah, we need changing rooms. Yeah, we need a kitchen. But actually, when we talked to the groups, it was clear that space could be better utilised. So that was a really good project or, or process as well. Don't talk to me about colour, right? Just moving on, drawing a discreet veil over the St Albans Park and Pavilion colour scheme. We'll move to the next image, which I don't really want to include that in our presentation at this stage. We're still getting, well, not still, we always get some really cool stories coming back from youth in our ward as well. And I have to say that Emma Norwich, the deputy chair, has really picked up, you know, the mantle on, on the youth in our. Is she the youngest on our board, Pauline? Oh, yeah, right. So she is very proactive in the area of youth engagement. And we're seeing this with, these two that came to see us, Travis Baldwin and Caitlin Lewis, talked about what a huge difference in their lives this project made going on the Spirit of Adventure trophy. And I think it was Travis's mum was there and, and she said that she saw a really amazing positive change in Travis when he came back from it. Just, did she say he was keeping his room tidying? I think the space that they had on the, on the boat was so small that they had to work really hard to keep it tidy. But, you know, these young people come and talk to us, they put together a presentation and they look us straight in the eye. And I think most of the board would agree that this is one of the, the highlights of the work that we do on the board is hearing that feedback from the young people in our ward. A lot of planting going on in the ward at the moment. This is the Matareki Dawn planting that was on the 15th of July out in Oruihia. And, yeah, again, very wet. I mean, it's been a wet last few weeks actually. And then we had some moa planting at the Kauputahe Creek. And that was with the University of Florida students, which got a bit of media coverage as well. And another planting day on the 25th, and that's board member John Stringer in the top right there. He went along to represent the board who worked with the student army on this. Oh, and that's it. Sorry, a couple of things just I wanted to raise before we finish. There are two main bits of work going on in the ward at the moment as far as consultation goes. The first one is the Cranford Street Downstream Effects Management Plan project. Now, a letter's been sent to all submitters and, look, I have to say, we have found that there are four or five submitters that have not received those letters. So we're just following up where that gap is and why that happened. We received 407 submissions in total. And on August the 6th, which is next Monday, the community board is giving the submitters and will hear from submitters who've said they'd like to be heard. The process here is that there is an independent engineering expert, Dr Shane Turner. And he's going to attend the meeting on Monday. He will then draft a report, which will be referred to you as councillors and will then proceed to a council decision. But that decision will be consulted on again within the community. Something that we're making very clear in all of our communications at the moment is that we are consulting above and beyond what is normally required for a project like this. And that's because we know how important this project is to everyone in the ward and how controversial it is, let's be frank. It's, it's getting a bit of coverage and there are, we're not going to please everyone on this. We know that. But we're not required to consult to this level. The, the condition and the designation for the road does make clear that the board or the council has to consider mitigation for this project. So it's actually part of the designation. So we think that that is proceeding the way it should at the moment. The other one is the bus, what's the word I'm looking for, Christine? Thank you, the bus priority on Main North Road. And that is quite a, I don't want to use the word fraught, it is a controversial part of, of, or one of the controversial consultations in our ward at the moment as well. There's been some reports on removal of parking and things like that. And as you all know, that's often an issue that sort of gets people going. But that's about all at the moment. We are finding that there is a huge pressure on our ward staff. They are all working extremely hard, helping with the newsletter, helping with the inquiries that we're getting and the engagement that we're getting from members of the community. We have made clear as a board that if there are concerns or issues around workload that that needs to be communicated to us. We cannot be dropping balls when it comes to these important consultations and engagement with the community. And so we want to make sure that that doesn't happen any more than it is at the moment.
I just had a question which is in relation to a different consultation. So I'm really pleased to see that the community board's engaging at the same time as ECAN on the changes to the bus route, which was part of a successful campaign, I think, by the retirement village in there to get the bus rerouted with the changes that are happening in the area to ensure that older people could catch the bus and staff could catch the bus too. That's, that's good. But why are there no, no bus stops, signs outside the shops that I go to down in this road?
You mean currently?
Yeah, surely you're not going to take the parking outside that little bit of shops and put a bus stop there, are you?
That is part of the process and the suggestion at the moment, but that is not.
But that's our consultation.
Yes.
So why did the community board choose that as the location for the bus stop?
We didn't. We were presented with that as the consultation or the, the project that they were consulting on.
But it's, it's our part of the project.
I understand that and the community board. To be perfectly honest, the community board was unaware that there would be that number of parks or indeed any parks removed from there. We do have a little bit of, well, we had much concern actually about this consultation. We feel that it is, we are consulting with ECAN at the same time, but it seems confused, in, in my opinion anyway. And some of the community aren't aware of who's consulting on which bit and to whom they send their information to. As far as the loss of the parking goes, and I think the councillors might like to speak on this. I know that Mike Davidson's been engaged with the businesses down there. We've been back through the presentation that we had at the community board and I have checked with staff. We do not recall being told that there were going to be up to eight car parks removed from outside those shops.
In fact, eight car parks equates to the entire length of those shops, just about. So I've been down there as well. But, I mean, we, the community board will have delegation over there, so we're not going to just go along with it.
But hang on, hang on. But this is what, this is what I'm confused about. Was the community board, did the community board actually sign off on the project to be consulted on? So can anyone tell me why that was the case? Because it's the community board's role to sign off on the consultation. It, that, we, we, we didn't delegate or the, we, we don't have the power to delegate that to ECAN. As I understood it, from the joint committee's, point, public transport committee's perspective, it was agreed that it would be excellent to consult the community at the same time. That doesn't mean that you delegate the decision-making to someone else. So who decided, who decided what went out to the public as far as the location of the bus stops?
The engagement team. Because the community board, we had a briefing. We didn't see the final consultation.
Was your briefing from ECAN?
Both.
No, both.
And, and we were not, as Ellie has, has said, we were not made aware that there was going to be car park losses outside those businesses. We knew that there were recent car park losses possibly on Mars Road. And that was not brought to our attention and especially not that number. So there seems to have been some sort of a glitch there. Yeah, we have delegation and we will have a proper process.
Christine's going to follow this up from a staff perspect, perspective today. I think what is really important here too, and I'm so glad you've raised it, that it came to us essentially signed and sealed and ready to go. And actually, signed and sealed without the full information. So when we as board members and as our councillors engage with residents either face-to-face or via email, it is very embarrassing to be informed of something of which we are unaware by the people who are affected by it. So, yeah, there's certainly a problem in the process here and Christine will be following it up from a staff perspective, but we will be from a.
Well, I, I, I just saw, I saw the signs. It, it is a, a, a shopping area that I go to frequently. One, very good coffee at Michael's Cafe. And two, I often buy flowers at the flower shop.
Yeah, right.
And not that I eat fish and chips very often, but they're very good as well. So I'm just saying, it's a very handy little shopping centre, but it is completely dependent on parking.
There are several issues that have come out of this that raise concerns and we are following them.
Okay, all right. Well, that's my submission.
Thank you.
Sarah, Phil, Tim?
If I could just channel Yani for a couple of minutes. Well, I, I, I'll do a minute rather than a couple. And we frequently get sent through consultations as a heads-up. So we get an email saying, hey, we're about to go and consult on this. This is what the documents are. And we don't get to sign them off as a board. And I know Yani's been asking and we've been asking as a board relatively frequently now to say, hey, can it come to us for sign-off before it goes out for consultation? But usually it doesn't, unless we get a heads-up at far enough head of time for us to say, hey, listen, we're not happy with this.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to investigate. There are some things that wouldn't go to a community board for sign-off first, but there are other things that would. And this is one that would because it's absolutely crystal clear. The decision-making sits with the community board and they should have signed off on what we have.
Landscape plans for parks and all those things that are community board delegations and they don't come to us first for sign-off for consultation documents.
I mean, we'd have to look at what all of them are. So, anyway, Phil, Tim.
Well, Leanne, I've raised this issue a number of times, but I think it's really time that we've got clarification about the process of signing off all the consultations, where they go, and especially when, for example, it's a community board project.
Tim.
You know, with our resident survey, we had, you know, questions about satisfaction, et cetera. So we've got to be so careful when we go out for consultation and we do a lot of it. So I'm just surprised that with this, when you ask for, go into consultation and you ask for submissions, isn't it a standard to say, and if you would like your submission heard or if you would like to be heard? But now it seems that this wasn't done and we're going out for, sending a letter out to say if you'd like to be heard.
No. No, what it was was, it was always communicated that you would be able to speak to your submission. The letter is just to confirm the date, the time, and would you like to book? Because when you've got four hundred and seven submissions, and at the moment, I think we're sitting at around twenty-five or thirty people coming in to talk, we need to essentially have an RSVP system set up. So it was always made clear in all of the collateral and information about the process that people would be able to speak to their submission.
But surely we would do, should do that in one go because we're doubling up staff time and the fact that we...
Well, the trouble, I mean, and this is where I'll go back to signing off on consultation documents. The original consultation document didn't set out, it set out a timeline, but it didn't set out, you know, we're doing this because we're required to by a resource consent condition. You know, there's going to be an independent report done of this. That person's going to be sitting on the hearings.
Are we talking about two different things? Are you talking about Cranford Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so he's talking about the letter that went out to the submitters after the submissions. This is for Cranford Street CNC downstream mitigation.
That's what I'm thinking about.
I beg your pardon, sorry.
Yeah, but the downstream, the original consultation document didn't set out what was actually, why? Didn't set out the why. Why are we doing it this particular way?
Right.
You know, that there's an independent expert being appointed and blah, blah, blah. What the letter has done has actually set all of that out. So it's actually explained the process, which wasn't done in the original consultation document, which is good. You know, the explanation letter is excellent.
But I think also too, because this is such a long process and you'll all be aware how long the CNC's been going, we need to be regularly re-engaging with the community as well because you can't send something out six, seven, eight, nine months ago and then assume that it's on people's radar as that date approaches.
Which is why having an email tree as well and constantly sending updates. I mean, the implications for the downstream effects won't be implemented until there's been a, you know, sort of a thirty percent increase in traffic or something like that as a result of the downstream effects taking place. So we're talking twenty-twenty and beyond. So it's not something that's going to happen overnight. It's something that's going to be...
No, but with respect, we need to also be ready to implement it or even be implementing it prior to it becoming a problem because the last thing we want to be doing is putting something in, in an area where the traffic has increased thirty percent.
Yeah, I think I was quoting from the resource consent, but I may have put that wrong.
Yeah.
No, I think it has to be, has to be in... It has to be in before the northern arterial opens.
Yeah.
It has to be in before the arterial opens.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, so we won't wait for the problem to present itself. We have to have it in place before the problem becomes apparent so that we're not being reactive and putting it in place.
But, yeah, I thought there were more layers to it than that.
Oh, no, you're right, there are because there are varying levels of mitigation that can be applied.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Anyway, so, so who, Pauline, Mike, seconded. So I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you, thank you.
We will need to get...
Oh, goodbye. Right, so could we have the Horswell Hornby representative, community board?
Curaled, oh, sorry, curaled lean and counselors. And I'll talk about our new name, Waipuna, later on. But anyway, it gives us great pleasure to present here a community board report to you today. And we have Part A matters. The recommendation that we approved the parking restrictions and, oh, no, that's not a Part A. But the first one is that we declined the approval under the, are we on to that one? Under the Reserve Act to reclassify part of Denton Park, which is a separate report coming later. So I did try to seek guidance earlier in our chat before the meeting, Leanne, whether we actually asked questions at this, at this part of the meeting or offered the opportunity to come to the table when that matter, the reclassification of Denton Park is following the area reports. So that's, are you happy with that? Yep.
Am I happy with, you're at the table now and then we're going straight on to Denton Park?
Yes.
So if you just deal with Denton Park at the end of the, at the end of your presentation?
That's fine, okay. And the approval of the reclassification. So we'll move on then to the, the next thing is the approval of heavy vehicle restrictions on various roads within our ward. That's something that's been an issue for quite a number of years, actually, is the inability to actually police those heavy vehicle restrictions. But what we have now is the ability for, for the police, for example, to actually pull over a moving vehicle and issue them with an instant infringement notice. So prior to this, it hasn't been the case. You've actually had to summons somebody to court. So we're very, very pleased with that progress. And the other thing I just wanted to clarify is the approval to construct two pedestrian pathways on Richmond Drainage Reserve to, adjacent to, there's a typo there. It's Knights Stream School, not Knight Street School. So we're very happy to progress with that. And the Ministry of Education's actually paying for that, which is quite astounding. Moving on then to the Part A, we're going to talk about, I'd just like to take this opportunity again to actually thank the panel, the hearings panel, and the staff that supported the hearings panel on this process. And I'm sure all the submitters that took part in that, either for or against, were very, very grateful for the efforts and the way that was, that process was carried out. So I know I did thank them at the extraordinary meeting, but it just takes this opportunity now here today too to acknowledge the work of the panel and the staff supporting the panel. Other significant, oh, the next, yeah, other significant projects in our board area are the strengthening community funds projects, which are, that are being processed. Quite a lot of those are being processed now, aren't they, Gary? So we're, that's a work in progress. And the other partnerships with community, community and organisations is the New Zealand Institute of Sport, Get, Set, Go workshop. So I understand that's been around other boards as well, taking part in that, Gary. So that's something that we're really, really pleased to give people the opportunity. There's over sixty students have attended tailored version workshops specifically aimed at preparing them for future careers and working in community support, our community sport at least. So that's something that's really, really good. Moving on then to the Upper Ricketton, Upper Ricketton War Memorial Library. That's a work in progress still and so is the Altairst Memorial Hall. So we're still working with those communities to find resolutions and way forwards on both of those War Memorial Library and War Memorial Hall. And the very exciting infrastructure project update is Napunawai Sports Hub, of course. And you can see the exciting coloured photos. Is that just a question that I'd like to ask of staff around? Are those, are those stand, the grandstand beams and are they coming from Jade Stadium? Because they look very similar to the ones that were above the Paul Kelly Stand. They're not? Okay, okay. Just look very similar. So thanks for that, John. So the car parks are already for use and the track's almost finished. It's, all it needs is, at the time of this report, was the staggered lines where you start so that the person on the outside of the track doesn't have to run any different distance from the person on the inside lane. So we're all well aware of that, us athletes that have been running around tracks like that. The Horswell Domain Skate Park update, well, that's, that's a work in progress, but it's due to be completed in December. But the exciting thing is the Night Stream car pa, ah, Night Stream Skate Park update is not only coming on budget, but two months early. So I'd just like to really congratulate the team on that and just let people know that if some have problems with, or should I not say anything about that? Oh, is it? Okay. So anyway, we've been very, very fortunate that we've been able to actually achieve what we have in Night Stream and it's a wonderful thing and it's actually opened now, it is open now, but it will be officially opened on Friday, the twelfth of October. So because it's been, been done ahead of time, we didn't really want, we didn't really want to have it fenced off until then, did we? And the community didn't. So the barriers are down and people can use it. So that's, that's a good news, very good news. Dean's Ricketton Road update, unless there's any questions on that, that's pretty straightforward, I think. But we're just waiting till the contracts are let for the next stage of Harakiki to Matapo so that we can set up with the contractor, a way of communicating for the community to actually communicate with the contractor to answer any questions or resolve any outstanding issues on the way forward with this difficult engineering work. Moving on then to the Ricketton Racecourse, Racecourse Alcohol Ban. So that's something that comes around every year and maybe one of these days it'll become permanent. The Templeton Community Submission Writing Workshop with council staff and the community have actually been working with the Templeton Residents' Association to help them with compiling written submissions on decision, and to the decision-making process, including resource consent applications and a long-term plan and local project. So I think that's a really good initiative from staff to actually get involved with the Residents' Association and help them to get their head around thinking about what might happen when they, if they need to, make submissions when Selwyn District, Fulton Hoven actually... Oh, you're saying time's up? I thought I was going to have a little bit more, yeah, thank you. So that's, that's wonderful me. That's in the Ricketton, excuse me, in the Ricketton area for children aged between eight and thirteen years to think positively about themselves. They're working with the University of Canterbury on that one. So that's, that's a good news story. The council's graffiti programme, of course, is ten years old. So there's an invitation to, to invent and coming up on that. And the Community Service Awards, we did touch briefly on that at the last, but here it is now. Brother Jimmy is the, the information on the Community Service and Youth Awards that we held in the Ricketton Racecourse Tea House. And we were, and we were entertained by the Iranian society with their excellent dancing. I'm moving on to the Holo Hornby event for the next one, next year, in March next year as the planning for that is underway now as we speak. And, yeah, other matters, progress, you know, on the community plan and, and community board matters of interest. I'd just like to briefly say that, because it's mentioned here about the area around the old Addington Sale Yards. But it's quite exciting that the university are actually doing a, a study, aren't they, into fly tipping in our ward? And they've asked our community board members for, for areas. So it'll be interesting and they're going to give the feedback of this fly tipping investigation to our board. So we'll probably have great pleasure in passing that on to the council as well as what they discover from that. So, and the others, of course, the Student Volunteer Army. That's, that's our star group. And it's really, really pleased to see that that's, that's sort of gone viral because it started here in Christchurch, as we know, at the time of the earthquakes. But it's, it's grown now to, it's not only students, there's other people involved in that as well. And it was really moving to see the partnership with the, with the Magery Stoneman Douglas High School. Some of the survivors from that tragedy coming out here and, and being involved with our Student Volunteer Army and community and planting some trees in Horswell Quarry in recognition of that very, very sad event. So that's, and the other thing is, of course, helpful random facts is Waipuna, which is W for water and Puna for spring, is very, very appropriate for our ward. And we're very grateful to have received that at our last board meeting. And we, because we do have the headwaters of the, of the three rivers, starting from springs in our ward, so couldn't be more appropriate. And it's interesting to know that the Ricketton Stream goes, a lot of people don't realise it, that goes directly, flows directly under the Westfield Moor and then pops back out on the other side of, um...
Division Street.
Division Street, yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, there we are. I won't ask, is there any questions, because that's for you to ask, Leanne.
Two questions. First one regarding to the Holo Hornby.
Yes.
My understanding that this year, when we organise the committee members, but during that time, the Greater Hornby Resident Association, they have not yet, you know, established. I suggest this time next year, we should consider invite their chair or their committee member as a part of the committee member.
Yep.
That's in the Hornby area.
Yep, we can make that, we can, we can look at that.
It's actually important to, yeah, it's actually important to realise that that committee is not led by council, it's led by the community. So the community will decide who, who's on the committee and council staff have no involvement in that.
Okay. Second is because the community board meeting on twenty-fourth of July, community board approve for some of the local rule, you know, a local rule ban for those, the heavy vehicle, you mentioned earlier.
Yep.
I just want to know, that's a part B or part A? Because today I didn't see this information.
That's a, that's part, it's not a Part A.
Part B, okay.
Yes, it is.
In Part B, when will be the effect?
I think it's effective... I think it's effective as of
Already?
Now.
That I'm not sure.
Yeah, because already, yesterday, I got a phone call, you know, from the Simo Street, the resident still complained, the heavy motor vehicle still pass through.
Yes, I know the gentleman.
When will be the effect? Okay, thank you.
Yep. But we'll find out officially, but my understanding currently that it is effective now, so I might
Those are signed into install.
Yes, signage is already there, brother. Signage is already there, has been for quite a few a few years, actually. It's just been difficult to enforce, that's all.
Aaron, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just did around Mike on the property review process, because that's come around all the boards, and your boards opted to retain everything. We opted to sell everything, because we're, you know, trying to chip in for the
Is that the same paper?
Are we dealing with it separately?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay, so could we, I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carry. And we'll move on to the Denton Park paper. Did you want to make a comment about that? Or I was actually going to get the chair of the, oh, I suppose it's, no, it's all right, okay, yeah. If you, did you want to make a comment about it?
Other than, that was our board resolution to receive the hearing panel's recommendation with an addition, and when that was put, it was put unanimously at the board, so I'm just quite happy to, with the help of Sarah, if need be, to answer any questions.
I understand that there's going to be another resolution added to this one, which says that request staff to report back to the 13th of September 2018 council meeting on a process for progressing as quickly as possible the assessment of site options and the development of the proposed library service centre in South West leisure centre in Hornby, notwithstanding the earlier decision to approve Denton Park as the preferred location. So
That's an amendment that was is going to come down.
Is the process is that the process from here is made clear as quickly as possible, because this has created an enormous delay in the
Do we need to revoke the earlier decision?
We can provide that advice back to you.
But actually, we don't need advice based on their decision not to change reserve stages. We could simply revoke the decision of 21st, 24th of August 2017 and request staff to report back on a new process.
In terms of process, standing order says that any decision or any recommendation to revoke an earlier resolution must come from the chief executive with two days' working days' notice. Now, we haven't done that, and we weren't contemplating doing that right now. We just felt that we should at least note the fact that there had been that earlier resolution. When we come back to you, there will probably be a recommendation that we revoke that earlier.
Well, can we request staff to report back, or request the chief executive then to report back? And was it the 6th of September? Is that the appropriate date? Okay, so if we Yes, so if we request the chief executive to report back on a proposal to revoke the decision of the 24th of August and to provide advice on a process, so just the rest of the words and then get rid of the brackets. Yeah, but that's got request geotechnical investigations of Kyle Park.
No, no, it was August.
All right.
So
So, hang on, there are some questions, so I'm going to have to decide where the questions are directed to. So it may well be staff, so it might be more appropriate rather than community board.
I just wanted to clarify the date of the resolution that you're referring to. Was it the date of the meeting of the Hallswell Hornby Ricketton Community Board? Or the meeting of where that outcome came to the council? I'm talking about the historic end in August.
The council meeting. It was a council resolution. All right, so has anyone got any questions of Mike? And if not, we'll say thank you to you and then we'll get staff.
Regarding this recommendation, particular paragraph three, I just want to know if paragraph five should be including paragraph three. The paragraph three, Kyle Park undertake lost geotechnical investigation should be the first priority.
It is.
We need to define that clearly, yes.
It's underway now.
Yeah, underway now, it's not undertaken, just initiate a subcontract with the possible consulting company.
It says as soon as possible. There's nothing, there's nothing further that we can do from a governance perspective than ask for it to be done as soon as possible.
Yeah, because why I emphasise this one? Because based on the possible location of this new facility to be built up based on the last year, even this year, you know, the couple of times, the location, majority of people still prefer in the Kyle Park, et cetera. So we need to define it more clearly, this is the first
councillor, I'm just going to ask that we don't go into the decision-making area. So if we just focus on what this says, and it's requesting that the geotech investigations happen as quickly as possible, staff are going out to tender, because it's not something that we've got internal expertise in relation to. We'll be going out to get contractors to do that work for us immediately. So
Thank you.
All right, so Ref.
Yeah, just following up on what you said about the geotech. There were two things there. One thing you said it was happening right now, and then you said it was going out for tender.
Yeah, it's going out for tender.
So the work isn't happening. And which budget is it going to come out of?
The budget for the project?
It's the council-approved project budget.
Okay. Are we going to make a decision on that when we get the tender back? In terms of how much it's going to cost to do the geotech?
Normally, that would be delegated to the project team. You wouldn't expect the council to make up an individual call on a small part of a project like this.
Because there were some big numbers thrown around during the
That was for the remediation and decontamination. This is just the geotechnical assessment of the site.
And in terms of the the options for this, is there an assumption that we are planning to progress with the same options? I.e. a joint a joint system?
No, that was part of the issue, that we need to actually go back and relook at all of those.
Yeah, because it says the development of the proposed library service centre and leisure centre.
Yeah, it doesn't say one site, it doesn't say one entity.
Okay.
It's sufficiently broad, but it would have to come back to us for a decision on that. Either which way. Everything comes back now for a decision.
Yeah.
Thank you, I just had a question.
This is very eerie, Yanni. So your image has now been restored, so far away.
Oh, great. It's really a question of both the board and the staff. But given, you know, it's really important that we aim to continuously improve how we make good decisions. Has there been any consideration given to some sort of audit review of this whole process to see what lessons we could learn from it?
No.
As I understand it, staff are getting together and working through the process that's been followed and where it could be improved or any issues that might come out of it. So there is a review underway.
The community board's not involved enough at this stage.
I just, I mean, I guess in light of our residents survey, in light of the whole process around this and the additional costs we're now incurring, I do think maybe if we could get a memo around what sort of lessons learned, processes underway, I think that would be really, really helpful. Thank you.
Yes, that will be done, thank you. All right, well, we'll go, one more question.
If the Kyle Park geotech investigation, we go to the tendering the system, I just want to know, you know, regarding Kyle Park, we probably need to request for proposal, you know, to define clearly, request a possible contractor follow our request. So my question is, which area, how big area, how deep we need to undertake this geotech investigation? And also, I was told by the community, whether we consider to take the penetrating the radar system, do it more kind of thoughtfully. This, I suggest, should be considered as part of our request for proposal. So who can answer my question?
It's a great question. Lee.
We're just in the process of going out for a proposal, so it's far too early to answer that at the moment. So we will come back to you as soon as we can. We are obviously keen to move forward as quickly as we can. We're going out to the market for a proposal currently, sir.
Yeah, but my counsel, you need to consider this one. Staff should be considered this factor, you know, yeah. Not miss out any possible.
Absolutely, because there is other stakeholders there. We have got a BMX track there, there is other impacted parties. So, yeah, we'd absolutely look at that.
Okay, thank you.
That's great, thank you. All right, so do I have a mover and a second? I do, no, I don't. I will have councillor Jimmy Chen would move, and seconded by Sarah. I will put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carry. Sorry, was that an aye? It was a delay, it was a delay, yeah. And thank you, Sarah, too, for chairing the hearings committee. The feedback was extremely positive, so we're very, very pleased. So thank you for taking on that role. All right, thank you very much. Property review. Oh, the property review. Okay, right, okay. So, did you want to just briefly introduce this one, or does staff want to introduce it?
I think it's pretty straightforward. Oh, sorry.
I said, yeah, well, I was just asking a question, do we?
I'll introduce it.
Because I know that Aaron's got a question for you, so we could go straight to the question if you like.
Yeah, I'm quite happy.
Aaron, far away. Time's now.
Yeah, so just, there's a lot of properties there, you guys, and some of them I can understand why you'd keep them. One that stood out for me was Main South Road, the old service centre, because it's quite an eyesore for the public these days, and that'd be a lot better developed into saying, and it's worth several million dollars. Why did that one not make the list, if any?
Well, because it was the way it was derived originally. It's deemed to be, it would have to go through the Crown land disposal process. It's also part of that site is a, was a previous quarry back in its day. Some of the buildings have subsided, but we are, we have seen the signal that we do want the demolition of that service centre building done ASAP, so that signal's gone through. But there's also, there's some other issues that need to be resolved before the final, and I don't know whether we'd want to talk about them just yet. Like, for example, the Milton Street Yard, you know, maybe.
Yeah, but there's also been plans to put a road link through there as well, so there's some unresolved transport planning issues associated with it. And just to clarify what Mike said about, it is Crown derived, so council wouldn't actually get any money from it. So we'd have to return it to the Crown. So I think it's quite a sensible decision that we sit on it strategically until we A, resolve the transport issues, it's got some infrastructure on it, and some of those issues before we go making decisions about it, because we may still want it for a community purpose down the track. And it's, although it's an eyesore, and there is a report going to the board to tidy that up, I think next month.
Quite a long list with few dividends.
The dividends are yet to come as things evolve. Dividends for the community in, yeah.
Dion.
The properties on Heskett's Road, are they occupied at the moment?
A couple, ah, yes.
Just two of them? Because there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight resident, or eight lifestyle blocks around there. One of them is not owned by the council, is that right?
Right, so Housing New Zealand, and that's that's got people in there that are very comfortable with their abode and their location and haven't got any issues to do with the noise from the speedway or
Yeah, so I mean, that leads on to the next question I had. I mean, it says in the report here that the land should not be used for, the land is not to be used for permanent residential use.
That was the resolution of the council in the day when it was, when they purchased.
Yeah, I mean, is that still the case? Because, I mean, there's $4 million worth of land that we're sitting on, what, land and property that we're sitting on there.
More than that.
It's four and a half million dollars.
Put it on the market, it'd be
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like these, there's properties on there that aren't being used at the council own, actually. Why would we not utilise them in some way? Or, yeah, they just seem like a petrolhead would love to live there.
Correct. It was still, it is still the existing council resolution that we do not put permanent residents in there. So the ones where there are habitable houses and we've tenanted that, those there on a temporary basis, not permanent. The value is somewhat affected if we're going to, if the council's going to control use. So they might be valuable as lifestyle blocks if you can put a permanent residence and house on them, but that is not what the council has resolved and wants to do. So that therefore significantly limits the value of the properties to being additional rural land for adjoining blocks, maybe.
Also, what is the underlying land use at the moment?
It's rural two, and the old district plan was rural two.
What about the new district plan? Does anybody know?
Oh, sorry, it was rural five, it's rural two now. It was rural five under the old district plan, which was one of the most noise-sensitive rural zoning you could have. In fact, you couldn't hardly, under that noise restriction, you couldn't hardly start up a chainsaw because your next door neighbour could complain about it.
It says on there rural five.
That's what caused some of the issues with rural Puna.
Yeah, it says rural five. I just, I mean, when was the decision of the last, when was the decision made for, or that previous resolution made?
The previous resolution was made when it was before the district plan review. In fact, it was before the earthquakes.
So how long have we owned these properties?
It'd probably be, probably close to
10 years, I would say.
Actually, just, I actually think we should actually look at that resolution and look at these properties in a little bit more detail than just say, keep them, because there's quite a lot of capital wound up there, and I
There are people around currently, I'm not expecting them to turn, who would like to show an interest
No, I mean
in either renting, leasing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm electric, can't use it, but I wouldn't mind living next to a petrolhead place, that would sound great. But I just, I do think, I mean, I don't know how we can, if there was any appetite there, but I think there's these ones that, you know, these properties at Heskett's Road probably need a little bit more closer look than just letting them lie, because many of those houses
Two out of five houses are used. For that location as well, council.
And can I say, you could keep those properties potentially for some linked, linked to, in fact, motorsport. We've got a regional motorsport at Rapuna. I was one of the ones on a different side to Mike over noise levels. I think the previous council, the one before that, bought the property Um, I think the previous council, the one before that, bought the properties to stop the problems for those residents. But I just think there's a long-term strategy to hold them for some activity that's linked to, in fact, motorsport.
Okay, so does the board support, rather than just retaining the following properties for future strategic purpose, actually maybe for these specific properties, actually start a process of actually looking more in detail over those?
The purpose of having them in that category is that we do look at them in the future, make the exact decisions you're talking about.
Yeah, but I mean, there's, there's, it just, I mean, that is just sitting on the land. I actually think I'd rather us sort of be a bit more proactive and actually within, maybe a resolution within this, to actually be a bit more proactive on these specific properties. Because there's, it just seems of all of them, that actually there's, there's a bit more use that can be. I've just been told that only two of them have been used. There's five properties there.
I, I think what you might be suggesting then is, um, because that's the intent, is to look at these, as you're saying you want them prioritised, and we do these ones sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I think so. I think, I mean, that just seems logical, that they're sitting there and not being utilised.
The, the resolution three offers us, can you just lift that up a wee bit? Um, rather than just limit that to, um, an alternative public use, and, um, well, I mean, there, an alternative public use gets around it, but an alternative, um, strategic or public use, you know, like, because it may well not necessarily be in our interest to be the owner. I mean, I was going to ask the same question about the Yorthurst Memorial Hall. Um, you know, and I know that there was a debate at the time as to whether building halls was appropriate way of memorialising, um, as in, uh, you know, the issue arises when a building comes to the end of its life. Um, and this one's been damaged and closed, uh, by the earthquake. So it's, it's not serving the purpose that it was built for, and it's not serving any purpose. Um, and, I mean, is it actually better off in our ownership doing that? Or is it better off in the community's ownership where they could, um, you know, sort of develop it and, um, I, I understood that there was some interest in the Yorthurst community.
And there is, and those meetings are happening now. I was invited to one with the community yesterday, but I couldn't get to it because I had other engagements. But next week I will be working, meeting with the, with that, um, community group that's driving the, um, proposal for the Yorthurst War Memorial Hall.
But, I mean, that may involve them putting up a proposal where they become the owners.
That's, all of that, so that's been talked about.
But why would we make a decision now to hold it in our ownership?
Exactly.
Um, because we, we don't want to preempt what might come out of the discussions with, with the community. Mr Watson and I have been talking about this, but anyway, he can update you.
So three applies to both. Can, yeah.
Can I just, um, clarify something in terms of the process? Um, the, the first precipitous decision, um, and if you reflect back to the four reports we had last month, is do we want to declare property surplus and sell them? Now, that, that is.
But that triggers a process for some because of the underlying designation.
We're absolutely obliged to then go on and sell. Um, so unless we're very clear that we want to sell it and get rid of it, um, I caution the council not to make that decision. I think, and, and then you've got the second group of properties, which is let's hold these for a strategic purpose to be worked on over the future. And then there's those two properties there in the third group, which is, um, we think these would be suitable for community uses, or they have community uses and or other public uses. Let's work and, um, come up with a proposal that can be well supported for those. If, if I'm picking up on the debate properly around, uh, maybe the Yorthurst Hall and, um, the Heskets Roads properties, I think, uh, the category they're in is good. What I'm hearing is you want to prioritise those and have them looked at sooner rather than later. So I, I don't think it needs the, the resolutions amended, but what it, what it is, is a message to staff at the community board that we crack on with those ones as a priority and with some urgency.
Well, if we can get that, if we can get that, um, you know, assertion, that, I suppose, then we'll have to follow it up. And I, I, I hope the community board will follow that up. Okay.
Yeah, but, I mean, we, this is, is asking us to delegate authority to the community board to make the decision for, um, retention for alternative use. Whereas, I mean, the community board might say, no, we better own it. Um, we're not gonna, we're not gonna put a proposal back to council.
You're true.
You know, but you could, you know, and I mean, the question is, is, I mean.
No, I think it should be cancelled.
Well, I've got, I've got no philosophical objection to the community board making, making a decision, but, but I, I kind of don't want them to feel constrained around the delegated authority in that we would be probably prepared to consider, you know, selling it, as we have done with other facilities. I mean, we've either provided funding or we've, um, provided a facility to a community group who've taken it over. So, um.
That could be an outcome of the discussions that are going on now.
That, um, that resolution four relates only to the properties in resolution two upon satisfaction of the issues in three, so it's only related to the third group of properties, which is to look for alternate uses.
But I, that's what I can't understand. The category, two, paragraph two says, support retention of the following properties subject to the conditions in resolution three. And then resolution three says retention of the properties set out in resolutions one and two above. So it doesn't make sense to me. I'm just, if, if it really is one and two above, then why would.
That should just be one. Uh, just be two.
Well, I don't agree with that because there's a whole lot more properties that should be in there.
No, that resolution three should actually only say, um, retention of the property set out and conditions. So the process outlined there in three and four relates to the two properties in resolution two. Uh, there's no intention to give delegations or make decisions on the others apart from hold them for the purpose of being looking at and reviewed in the future. And those decisions will come back through the community board, the council.
Well, this is where I got confused, because three says retention of the properties set out in resolutions one and two.
Yeah, it should only be two.
But, but we want you to go through a process of this for, for, for some of the properties in one.
Correct.
I mean.
Correct, but the, the decisions in one are, um, what are we going to do with those properties strategically? They're not to go out and look for alternate public uses. So the, the community board have said in terms of the two properties in two, we think they're suitable for alternate public uses. We want you to go out and look at those, and they've got to meet those criteria and bring back some decisions on future public uses. The, the properties in the first category are not, hey, we want to look for alternate public uses. They require some higher strategic decisions. Do we want to hold them? Do we want to sell them? Those sort of things.
So that would be a separate line of work?
That's a separate line of work and, and at a higher strategic level. Whereas the ones in two are definitely go out and find another public use. We want to keep those in council ownership, and we want to look at alternate public uses for them. But we're not saying that with the properties in one.
Properties in one, you're saying keep them in council ownership for a future strategic purpose?
Yep.
Yes, yeah.
So, so the work is to identify that strategic purpose or not?
Hmm. That's, that's yet to be identified. So what they're saying is we don't think these properties should be ASOL or be used for another public purpose until we really have a good feeling of what we want to do with them. So it could be working with the community board, they actually go, oh, let's sell them. Or we've got some other ideas we want to use for them. Yeah, it's not a final decision, no.
But I think those properties.
But retention we're delegating to the community board.
I think if you look at it in terms of, there's a list of properties, and one is, we don't want them, let's sell them. The other one is, we want to use them for alternate public uses, and the other one is, we're not sure.
And, or we're retaining for strategic purposes.
If I may, uh, better me, I, I think there is a way for, you don't need to change the delegation, the, uh, resolution as recommended there. If you look at number three E, that is the key hurdle that needs to be addressed. And for sites such as, if, if your concern is, and I'll use the example, that board might decide they want to retain the Yorthurst Hall, but council might choose to have a different approach. In fact, E comes into play because there is no budget set aside apart for demolition. So the board won't have that delegation because there is no funding established. It will have to come back to council for the final decision.
Oh, for the funding.
And it was the same, I'm pretty sure, the Heskets Road. We don't contain, um, I have to scrimp and save to find any money we, um, uh, we have in there because there's no allocation, long-term plan for the maintenance of this Hesket Road property. So that becomes the key restriction. You can leave the recommendation as is. Um, and the board's recommendations will have to come to council for consideration.
I'm just, I mean, I'm not wanting, and, you know, you've been very helpful. Thank you for that. I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking that there was a pretty strong submission, as I recall, and I don't have any of the facts in front of me in relation to the Yorthurst Memorial Hall. Um, that I'm hearing from the community board chair that they're in active conversation with the community. Rather than including it in a resolution that states that we want to approve the retention of it for a future strategic purpose, when we have money on budget just to demolish it, I would, I'd much rather just say, um, provide further advice on you, Yort, so take it out of there, provide further advice on Yorthurst Memorial Hall, five to four pound road, once the, um, discussions have been had with the local community.
And that's, that's exactly what's happening. Um, it says, if you go to three, the retention of these properties, um, as long as for public use that can be rationalised, satisfy, satisfies a clearly identified need and is supported by a sound, robust business case. Um, that is, that is what's happening now, is that community are trying to put together a sound, robust business case. If they can't, then it will come back, and we may, we may, um, start considering other options for that site. But that's where it's at currently.
But what I've been told is that the expression, plural, plural resolution.
Yep.
One and is not what the report was meant to say. It was only meant, three's only meant to apply to two.
Well, we were quite happy with it at a community board to accept the staff recommendation without change because it, we'd had workshops, we'd had workshop on it, we'd been, visited all the sites. We had discussions before this report was written. When it did come to us, we were comfortable, um, as a, as a majority to adopt the staff recommendation without change.
Well, he, he, I'm going to move an amendment then, because I, I, I'm, I just think that classifying it as approving the retention of it for a future strategic purpose today is not necessary when we're having conversations with the community. And I think it would show good faith to the community that we highlighted the Yorthurst Memorial Hall, that we said that we wanted further advice once the, once the local community had, had an opportunity to provide some input. I mean, it just, I just think it would send a very good message to the local community.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I think it's okay.
Well, that's okay.
I think it's okay.
Intentional, isn't it?
It's open.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, um, Liam is going to move an amendment.
On the Yorthurst Hall.
Um, just specifically on the Yorthurst Hall.
I think it's fine, actually. I think it's good.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, we're, we're probably eighty percent through, through the discussions on Yorthurst. We've asked them to come back with a business plan through the board and then, and then through the council. Um, remembering that the board has, um, had made a recommendation to have demolished. It came to council and that was put on hold at the last minute.
Yep.
So they've had seven months of, of research and having a look at it. Um, the only question I have put to them is.
So who put it on hold?
Oh, the council did.
The council did?
On hold in, uh, November last year.
December, December last year, community board presented this issue, particular.
So this is why I'm remembering it. Why do we want to include it in a resolution approving the retention of it when we haven't had that further report back?
At the meeting at the time, and, um, so, um, the council resolved at that time to, to embark on this process, which we're still.
Would this, would this, would anyone die in a ditch if I was to just cross it out?
And, and the system is shown, there's no unintended consequences if you take it out, so I think that's fine.
Okay, delete.
You sure?
Yeah. Okay, you're happy to move?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, and seconded by Vicky? Right. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you. Thank you.
Whose question started?
We've got, we've got tea and coffee outside. Do people want to grab a, grab a coffee? Yes, or take, take ten minutes? Yes, or take, take ten minutes? Yeah.
We'll end the meeting the same way. Right. So, the next item is the Chief Executives' report.
I'm just going to take it as read. I was going to talk about the awards, but we've already done that, so...
All right. Yanni, I know that you're there. Yanni?
Great. Yeah. I just, I had some questions on this, I just wanted to flag that.
Far away.
Oh, cool. Just, I just wondered, we still don't have any date for the review of the water issue, the drinking water, and if there's any update on a lightly back-back for that report by Bruce Robertson. That's the first question.
I don't see that in my report. So you're asking about something outside of my report? I can't give you a date at the moment.
Well, you've got drinking water. Right, okay. There's one question that was in relation to the properties. It makes reference to Land Drainage on page 120, under the flooding intervention policy, it talks about the property that we've acquired, and one of the issues, well, one of the questions down the bottom is, it says that four have been demolished. I was just trying to understand if there's any process strategically to think about potential transitional uses before properties are demolished. This was raised as part of discussions over the Heathcave River briefing, joint briefing that we had as community boards and land drainage, and also property disposal process. So I just wanted to understand if there is any report coming back to us around future use options before properties are demolished? Just thinking of what's happened in the red zone, for example, is something that we've been trying to avoid, and wondering whether there's any transitional temporary uses that are being considered.
We always look at those things, but some of the properties will be related to work around land drainage and be required for that, so it really depends on the specific use or not over that period of time. So there's not planned to be any report coming back on individual properties.
I think that's a real gap, and I think we should think about some sort of process at least, particularly, you know, I just know in our area for a number of properties on the property disposal list that have come through the community board that are quite close to where possibly some of the properties are acquired. We've got potential cycleways going through with designs and landscape plans for the river, and yet we don't seem to have any, any connection to the properties that have been acquired and been demolished.
Yeah, so, as I say, we'll consider all those things with individual properties, but many of them are demolished as part of a bigger programme, such as the land drainage programme.
Sorry, I just, I understand why we've acquired them. Are you saying that because there's works that we're doing on those properties in terms of land drainage?
Well, there might be. It depends on the individual properties.
Okay. I just wonder if we could get a memo or what the process is for consideration before they're demolished, so that if the board or community have potential uses. The only other thing related to that was around whether there's any sort of recycling going on of the properties. I know that, again, this was one of the issues that came up with red zone demolitions, that they lacked sustainability in how those properties were demolished, with the law was to go and go to landfill rather than being used with the value that it had.
Yeah, we always consider those things as well.
Okay. And a final question I had was just around, it was around the CSR's that have come in on page 110. The request for service relating to three orders and last transfer needed to compliance of the top three. I'm just really concerned about the number of requests for service related to transport that increased by 22% over last year, and it was potholes, road tunnel and sweeping. Can you just give us an understanding of what the organisation is doing in response to that huge increase, and when we sort of expect to see it stabilise in terms of the increase not, not going up as much, or hopefully reducing significantly?
So as you're aware, we've been doing some work around our maintenance contracts, ensuring that they're responsive and proactive in terms of the things around potholes, again, through the CSR process, look to repair those as soon as possible, and had some good feedback on some of those. I think some of this is also about just increased awareness and increased ability for people to put in CSR's, so we're likely to continue to see more of those over a period of time before they level off.
Right. An interesting conclusion, I just re-
Sorry. You go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to commend the staff that have developed, I think it's the GIS or the Smart Map where you can actually, we can actually log in and see all the CSR type requests.
Yep.
I just think that's a fantastic resource, and it's really valuable for us as elected members to see where there's clusters of requests coming in, and so I think it's only send, snap, solve at the moment, but I just wanted to pass my appreciation for the staff that have developed that. I think it's a really useful tool.
Yeah, thank you for that, and I agree that it is helpful for us then to really focus on perhaps our contracts in particular areas, or to identify where we need to put some extra effort.
Yeah.
Very good. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Chief Executive, Glenn?
Yes, a question. Thank you for the information on the comprehensive stormwater network discharge consent, which the Eritrean Trust has taken interest in from their perspective, but my question's about the midges, just what are those, perhaps David has the information, that ensuring the new planned midge control measures are ready for the start of next month, what are the new measures aside from what we've been trying?
I'm sorry, to get the detail, I'll have to go back to-
Yeah, I understand rather than new, it's about, you know, new year in terms of addressing that, and it was reasonably successful at the end of last season, so we were looking to do that earlier more comprehensively.
Good. Well, I'd like to move that, oh, Jimmy?
Regarding to the page 115, engagement and consultation, here particularly emphasised the council, the 14 project for the consultation, say to assemble, finish, but my view is, because we have launched the multicultural strategy for more than one year, but my view is quite a few other projects still not yet engaged, we've lost the multi-active, multicultural group or service and information second, but this time I'm quite happy, you know, the kind of the council, the heritage, the strategy, they have focused on engage with those the multi-active, multicultural group leaders will turn up, so this laid a evenly. I'm quite happy. Whether this one can be the kind of role model, you know, the other project might consider just one time, integrate all those community leaders come to feedback to us, that is my suggestion.
Very good suggestion, and the more we can integrate our thinking around those things, the better. Agreed. Thank you.
Phil? Thanks, Leon. I just want to make the point, and Carleen's referred to the opening of the Woods Mill, and just how significant that is, given the time that has taken. I think it's probably at least 15 years it's been going, it was certainly well pre-earthquake, there were attempts to restore it, and I take the hats off to the developers who had to go, and there were quite a few failures, but I think it's a good example where the Haggan, and what was big money, it was $900,000, it has really worked out. I understand that all of the apartments that Mr King has built have all been sold, and it was good to be at that opening.
I just went down to have a look at it over the weekend, it's amazing. I actually found it by accident. It's amazing, yeah, extraordinary. All right, well, I'll move that we receive the report. Is there a second for that? Phil, I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. And now we'll move on to the Mayor's Monthly Report, and just, I thought that I would highlight the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Students' Visit to Christchurch as well, I know that one of the community boards did too, but it was an exceptionally powerful occasion, I thought. It was a great opportunity to have young students who'd been through, you know, a disaster, meeting up with a group of students who didn't so much live through the disaster and the role that they're in today, but showed the longevity of a movement that had purpose, and that's the Student Volunteer Army. So they're both organisations, emerged from the disaster, but, you know, I just thought it was incredibly powerful, and I went to their leadership summit where they had a number of presentations, and then they kicked all of the adults out of the room, and the two groups have worked hard on developing the model that enables a movement to keep going beyond the, you know, the immediate aftermath of disaster. So I've invited the Student Volunteer Army to come and present to the symposium that the government's organising, I've advised the minister, and she's very pleased with that approach, and I think that's going to be a very powerful legacy that they will leave, not only our city, and not just the city of Portland, Florida, but also, you know, the world in terms of young people and their capacity to step up after disaster strikes. So it was a pretty, pretty powerful and moving occasion, as I've identified in the report. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Yanni, have you got any questions for me?
I just, I just only had one brief, brief comment really, and that was just to say, you know, I was really disappointed I couldn't be there for the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Students' Visit, as even maybe I went to high school in the USA, walked through middle detectors into school every day, with armed policemen at our school 24/7, and also I've got a personal connection to Florida, that's where my grandparents were from, so I just really wanted to say thank you for hosting them, I wanted to acknowledge Nancy Gilbert for her role in bringing that together, and while being disappointed not being there, I'm sure that Christchurch and yourself went out of your way to make them feel welcome, and I just really appreciate, appreciate that. So that was the only point I wanted to make in regards to your report. Thank you.
No, thank you for that, Yanni. It was, it was that, and it was all of that, it was incredibly amazing. And Nancy Gilbert, who's our honorary consul in Florida, she's, she's had that role for, oh, I don't know, about nine months, and I think she's achieved more than I think any honorary consul in the world has achieved in terms of making a very real and meaningful connection between Florida and Christchurch, New Zealand. It's just, yeah, it's been outstanding, so... Vicky?
Very brief question. The symposium you mentioned, and I seem to remember reading somewhere the number of people that could go to it wasn't very high?
Well, there are a number of workshops that are being worked on as well, it's just the venue.
Yeah. Is it going to be able to be watched?
Yes, it will be, as I understand it, it will be live streamed. Yeah, yeah. So that's at the end of November, but there'll be a lot more details, there's still invitations going out to speakers and sorting out the final process, and we've got a couple of workshops that we're working on at the moment as well. All right, would someone like to move? Tim, thank you. Aaron, thank you. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no.
Aye.
That's carried. The people were laughing, Yanni, because it sounds like you're saying no. Timing's everything, but that's all right. It's a delayed yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is external membership on council hearings panels, which we asked for a report back on, so we're going back to the other report, I think. So I was late, yes, here we go. So this is a delegation to myself acting on advice in terms of any external membership to council hearings panels, other than those under the RMA, on a case-by-case basis where matters of significance to mana finua have been identified, have been considered. This came up as a result of the reserve paper that we considered a few weeks ago. You're happy to move? Moved by Tim, seconded by Aaron. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you very much. The outline under the-
Yeah, no, just, sorry. I was sorry to interrupt, just in regards to that voting, I'm just saying if I want something voted against, I'll just express that, but otherwise I'll just remain silent and just take it. That might all be in favour, unless I express otherwise.
Sorry?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I was just going to say, regards to voting, I'll just, unless I'm voting against something, I just will remain in favour, but I won't say anything.
That's fine.
Okay, cheers, thank you.
Okay. So the, the next paper is the outline under the Greater Christchurch Regeneration Act, proposed part revocation. Sorry, I'm just, I'm just trying to find which paper it's on, it's on the first one, isn't it?
Yeah. Number 17.
Oh, no, I've gone to the wrong one, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, I've got it in front of me. Who have we got with this one?
Oh, well, it's going to be Ivan Thompson or Ivan?
No, I've just emailed Ivan.
Yeah? Here he is. Ivan, perfect timing, come and grab a seat at the table. Thank you. Oh, no, no, well, I know what it means. What it means is that Regenerate Christchurch are developing the Otakaro Avon River Corridor regeneration plan, rather than, well, yeah, the outline proposes partial revocation, it says evocation in here, revocation of existing provisions of the LEAP and the Christchurch Central Recovery Plan that could affect the achievement of outcomes in the regeneration plan. No, sorry, this is, this outline proposes partial revocation of existing provisions of the LEAP and the Central City Recovery Plan that could affect achievement of outcomes in the Otakaro Avon River Corridor regeneration plan. So it's that tiny little bit of the Avon, Otakaro Avon River Corridor that sits within the four avenues. So that's, all it's talking about is just that little portion of land that, that sits within the CCRP boundaries, which is within the four avenues, okay? So it's just that tiny bit, it's the Avon Loop. Do we need a map? You know what I mean. The Avon Loop, yeah. Tim?
So just, because for me, I've been, you know, going on about how important the Avon Loop is, is, you know, we have one chance in our lifetime, in the city's life, to add a city park to our armoury, if you like, of, for events etc., Hagley Park is to the point of almost being overused. We have an opportunity, how will that affect this or our process and our say in that?
Okay. The current situation is that the Central Christchurch Recovery Plan has Appendix One, which is the regulatory framework for the central city, and that regulatory framework is now in our district plan, but it is, all that area is zone residential, so the actual recovery plan itself uses the old zoning, so it's living four or four A or something, and our new plan, it is central city residential. Now, in order for the regeneration, for the Otakaro Avon regeneration or the corridor plan to get momentum in that part of the central city, we need to change the plan, and we can't change the plan until we revoke that part of the Christchurch Central Recovery Plan.
And the LEAP?
And, you are not quite sure about the LEAP, there's a, in the letter, in the, that we're suggesting is that we need clarification on what part of the LEAP needs to be revoked. Actually, I'm, personally, I don't think the LEAP probably needs to be touched for this particular process, it probably, we're going to address that issue later on, because it's basically redundant, but coming back there, the central city, or the Christchurch Central Recovery Plan needs to be amended in order to facilitate that corridor through into the Avon Loop.
Yeah, Phil and Glenn?
Thanks, Ivan. Look, we're aware of regeneration, Christchurch, Regenerate Christchurch have been doing their consultation, and I'm just wondering what other opportunities there might still be. For example, we had a presentation at our committee yesterday, and Kate Jues around, on world peace and disarmament, she reminded us that Elsie Lock had previously been a park, as you'll recall, and it's no longer there. So it's, and Kate suggested that perhaps around the part of that Avon Loop, there might be a scope for a park or the Peace Walk. So I'm just wondering, Tim also referred to a park, say, in that area, is there still scope within regeneration Christchurch's plans for us to be able to include some of these ideas that have come to this council table?
I believe so. This is the first stage, the, an outline simply sets out the process, it doesn't set out the outcomes. Now, some of you may remember when we did the Cranford regeneration plan, that is, that was preceded by an outline, and what the outline did was said, right, you've got to, this is the process by which you will do the regeneration plan, it's set out timeframes, engagement, that kind of thing. So this is the same thing, it doesn't actually deal with outcomes. So what the outline says, this is a process, this is the issue, right, now the next stage is to do the revocation, and then there is more feedback sought amongst the partners, and that's the appropriate time you could give that feedback.
Yeah. Glenn?
Thank you, and thank you, Ivan. My question's in relation to an example there, page 136, where it says, for example, section 60 of the Christchurch requires RMA decision-makers to not make a decision inconsistent with the regen plan or a recovery plan. I'm just curious over whether there are any potential downsides to that, or any detail that we need to be-
No, that's the very reason for doing this, because if Regenerate Christchurch produced a plan which, say, had open space, which is probably likely, it's inconsistent with the Central Christchurch Recovery Plan. So, and you can't do that, so-
Well, they can amend.
Well, they can, yeah, but you can't do, you can only, that's why it's been revoked or amended, this part of it, so that what they do is consistent with that recovery plan.
The way I read this was that this was more of a belts and braces approach, because they actually have the power under the regeneration act to amend the central city recovery plan in the plan itself.
Yeah.
But I think that they don't want to do that, because in a way, it detracts from what they're trying to do in terms of the whole, of the vision for the corridor.
Yes, that's correct.
And to get into a technical decision around amending an existing plan, I mean, I favour this approach. I probably wanted to see whether it could go a bit further and sort a few other things out, but I've been persuaded that it's probably better to deal with this as a standalone item and resolve it, and it'll be a relatively quick process. I don't think anyone will, will take a particular objection to freeing this up for the regeneration processes under the Act. It's just caught in a, it's caught in a, this little vortex of previous planning arrangements.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess it will act-
Or serve to act for the wider corridor once-
No.
Once, once only, just for-
No, no, the, the central city recovery plan stops at the four avenues, so it doesn't go into the residential red zone at any other way, shape or form. Dion?
I just wanted to be clear, so by doing this, well, actually, I'll start again, the reason that we need to do this is because this is central city living, and that would go against what regen are trying to propose with the green spine, which would be parks.
It would make it easier procedurally and clearer for the public, I think, as to what, you know, what needs to be done to regress the Otakaro Avon Corridor or regeneration plan into the, into the central city, wouldn't as part of the central city. It's just clearing the regulatory-
So you can actually make it a park, the green spine.
There was a lot of concern about the retention of central city residential in this area for actually the points that whoever mentioned-
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it, that's good.
Raised, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yanni, did you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So moved by Dion, seconded by Tim. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ivan. Draft submission on the Christchurch Casino licence renewal application. Hmm? Yes, you have an interest in the casino.
I'm a man of love.
Don't, don't say things like that, even as a joke, it's not funny.
I was working from some time.
Do you? Okay, all right. Okay. Right. Sorry, this is on the other sheet. Right, okay, so this hasn't been to a committee or anything like that, at least it has?
We had a workshop.
A workshop, so Phil, would you like to introduce it then?
I'm sure the staff can add to this, but I guess the casino being well-known, it also has a very big role really in terms of hospitality in Christchurch, it's quite central, so, but what, when we had the workshop, we decided we'd really like, and that was with guidance from the staff too, that we'd like to see some additional conditions with the licence that they have. It's not to say they're not doing a good job, and that things aren't done in an orderly way, but there are some, some things that we thought could be improved. One was that they be clearer messaging around the issue of problem gambling for people, so that those negative effects of gambling can be avoided, and also bear in, we need to bear in mind, and it was in the report, that the, in Christchurch, we've got a higher proportion of our population who, who need to seek problem gambling services than throughout the rest of the country. So what, the other part with the submission too, is to actually ask, I guess, the casino for a bigger contribution to the charitable trust, which assists problem gambling, and the report shows that in fact, when the casino started, there was quite a significant amount of money, I think it was about $200,000 a year, that has come back quite a lot. That has come back quite a lot. And we understand that throughout New Zealand, casinos do contribute more. And we're going to, the recommendation was that we ask for either 2.5% of their profits or 225,000 a year, if I've got that right, whichever was the greater. So, yeah. And the other part too was that that we as a council could have closer links with the trust and be more involved. So that in fact, there might be a councillor who will be part of a forum that they already have so that in fact, we can, you know, have these discussions around these issues. And that council in that way would be a link with our Christchurch communities for the casino. But what the other specifics to Gavin might like to add.
All right. Has anyone got any questions? I think it's all been
I just wonder, sorry, I wasn't at the seminar yesterday. I just wonder if the 2.5% is actually sufficient or the 225,000 per annum. Like, if you go through their figures, the profit was in excess of 16 million before tax for 217. The net profit for the casino is not provided within the Skyline Group, but the group recorded a profit of 68 million for the 217 year. I think we're being quite conservative with our 225,000. When Christchurch Casino came into the city, it was the first casino in the country. So it wasn't subject to these same rules. I like the idea that that they have to give some money back to the community. I don't think it all needs to go on problem gambling. I think but, but they should definitely provide money back to a community that needs it. And I just think 225,000 is, oh, it's low. I mean, at the moment, they're giving, they started off at 191,000 per year for the first five years, and then they dropped to 141,000. So this is probably the only chance we get for what, another 25 years?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen, okay. Still quite a long time. So the amount per annum will actually matter. I just think 225 is very conservative.
I tend to agree as one councillor too, Vicky. And I guess now is a time to perhaps increase that percentage at least.
Well, we've made it to greater 2.5 or a dollar figure, which is fine, because sometimes it's very restricted.
Yeah. Keeps us in line with Auckland, 500k. That's what they will say. Queenstown Wharf, much greater.
And the profit's the same as that in Auckland?
Sorry?
The profit's the same in Auckland, is it?
No, but proportionately, the effects are worse in Christchurch.
No, no, it's not about, this isn't about the problem gambling. This is actually about
Giving back to
Giving back to the community. And I think you've got a better chance if you if you make it proportionate to, you know, the other, the other institutions, which is what I thought that you had done, but
We'd certainly provided a comparison of what the other casinos are required to put into their charitable trusts.
Is it a percentage?
Well, they vary. A lot of them have a percentage and a dollar figure, similar to what's being proposed here with the greater required to go to the trust. But there's huge variation in the requirements on the casinos throughout the country. And we haven't been able to find a clear rationale for why those differences exist. So the only conclusion we could come to is that it's somewhat arbitrary and is decided as part of, I guess, the negotiation with the community to establish a casino in the first place. As councillor Buck said, as Christchurch was the first casino in the country, that negotiation with the community, if you like, didn't happen.
Right. Did you, I'm just, I'm just reading it now back over again because did you make the point that this, that we were the first cab off the rank, as it were, and that therefore subsequent licences enabled, you know, that conversation to occur?
Oh, no, that's not specifically made, but the
It's a good point, though.
Yep.
It's quite a strong point. And I actually also like the language that Vicky just used, which is social licence. You know, because there is, you know, I mean, gambling's going to occur in society, whether it's legal or not, you know, I mean, you know, but, but, and, but this is, this is legalized gambling, so. And one of the quid pro quos is the return to both the problem that it creates and also to the community. The community part's the social licence, in my view. So I just think that if we just make that a little bit stronger, they're not hearing submissions, are they? Or are they?
Yes, they are.
Does it say that?
In the recommendation, the second recommendation is that the council delegates authority.
Look, nothing sort of, but, I mean, you know, I don't want to give myself extra work, but what about saying delegate authority to the mayor and the chair of the social community?
I'm very happy that you speak to it, too.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I just think that if you want something, then you've got to present a really powerful case. And the language is important and the history is important as well. So, which means that we don't really need, if we're going to be heard in person, then we don't need to adjust it. We can we can say that in person.
That their charitable contribution needs to be very clear and open and transparent, which it does not appear to
What, does this have to be in by?
Eighth of August.
That's next week. Okay. Well, look, why don't you just delegate the final version to me and Phil?
Yep.
Yep.
Yanni?
Is that Yanni coming or going? Right.
Just two things quickly. With the timeframe and the dollar amount and things, it could be that there's a suggestion when you do speak that it could be a dollar amount that increases over time, and that could be as part of the licence. But the other thing is with the inconsistency around the country of the different amounts and the lack of clarity over why that is, do we want to write to the government and ask for a national sort of directive on that?
I think that would be fine, but it won't solve this.
No, 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 because they'll only be able to do it as licenses came up.
Yeah.
But just as an additional
I suspect it's not high on their list.
No, I wouldn't think so. Yeah, yeah.
Given that all the casinos will need to go through this process at some point, it may be something worth noting to the Gambling Commission, who will oversee all of those renewal processes.
Yeah, but getting some sort of consistent approach and rationale and things like that would be really good.
Yeah.
And asking for that to happen.
So I'm happy with what you've suggested, Leanne, but I wonder if we couldn't just alter that dollar figure?
But that the minimum figure be 500? Yeah, no, no, no problem. But, but those figures should be 2.5 and 500? Yeah? 2.5 and 500?
Or 500,000, whichever is the greater, yeah, which is what the document, yeah.
Question, please. Is that post-tax? I mean, I presume they pay income tax.
It's an interesting question.
They pay income tax as a consolidated group. The casino is part of the Skyline Corporation. So all of them pay income tax and the requirements in the conditions are net profit, so after tax.
I wonder if you should put it in there then? No, because it's a net profit after tax. It's a legitimate business and they do pay tax.
Yeah, there's a gambling levy.
There's a gambling levy that sits over the top of each machine as well.
Yeah, I understand that. And I understand the double zeros on their roulette wheel and everything, yeah.
But this is the, this is the figure for Auckland. All right.
So that 500 seems fair for over the course of 15 years.
Plus it's set in concrete for 15 years as well.
But I think having it increasing, having the dollar amount increasing over time, if they're able to do that, would be quite good over 15 years.
I think it's fine because you're covered by 2.5%. So it's whichever is higher.
All right. Would someone like to move this? Phil, would you like to move it? Seconded by Vicky. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That is carried. Now, have we got
No. No peeks, eh?
Right, there is no public excluded items for us to consider today, so I would like to Wait, 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 wait. I was going to declare the meeting closed, but just, just, you know, just, I want to do it on the right note. Right, I declare the meeting closed. Saturday night.